Welcome, everyone. This is the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board for Tuesday, May 23, 2024. We have a very full agenda tonight, so we'll start with please rise and join me for the point. Okay. We have minutes of our May 7 meeting in our packet. People had a chance to review them. Is there any motion?
To approve.
Motion's been made and seconded through the minutes. Any additions to recent corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Any extensions? Okay, thank you. Any board announcements? Nope. Okay. And I don't have any announcements. So are there any public comments or requests from the floor to be heard on anything that's not otherwise on the agenda? Anyone zooming in who has anything to say if you're not otherwise on the agenda? Okay. So we're going to go down under action items. We've got two things here that are combined. So this is A and B. The board is meeting with the owners of the Cortina Inn and I noticed that Mr. Drew Kumar is here. So thank you very much. And we also have invited and are pleased to have representatives from the State Agency of Human Services. We have Commissioner Chris Winters. Is it Commissioner or Secretary?
It is Commissioner.
Okay. And we have Todd Delo. Okay. And we have Adam Sanchuk. Very good. Thank you. Welcome all. We have Lily Sojourner on Zooming in as well. We're chuckling because on the desks of each of the Select Board members is the picture from the high school yearbook, Rutland High School class of whenever it was showing the two most likely to succeed Lily Sojourner and Matt Geddes. So you folks already have a history. Welcome. I'm glad you're here. Um, as you know, the Cortina Inn has been housing the homeless under a couple of different voucher programs. And we hear the occasional rumor, and that's why we asked to talk with you. The rumors range from the state of Vermont is going to buy the Cortina Inn and turn it into a homeless housing or some kind of housing for those close to homelessness. The other rumor we hear is that the state of Vermont is going to lease the Cortina, a long-term lease for homeless housing. And we don't hear these things directly from you folks because we haven't really been in touch with you folks. We hear it from our friends in the city, and we hear it from people at Reddick. You know, there's, you come down, everybody knows you're in the area looking at places that might be good for homeless housing or whatever it is. So we keep hearing these rumors and we thought we would invite you to come in and tell us your plans. We have been, obviously, our town has been impacted by the housing of the homeless. We entered into a contract. There was an Act 250 proceeding. There was a settlement agreement that, under which the Cortina is paying the town for some of the impacts that housing the homeless is causing there. The Mr. Kumar will confirm that the payments are right on. They've, they've all been made. But it's creating a toll on our town, our police services in the past, our fire services. And I'm sure our school is impacted, although they were not part of conversations because of the confidentiality that they're bound by. So in short, please tell us what your plans are. And please tell us what the prospect is for long-term housing here, what the state's going to do to help these folks. And I guess I'll just turn it over to you. Individual board members may have questions, but basically it's tell us your plans, please.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Ashcroft. And for the record, my name is Chris Winters. I'm the Commissioner of the Department for Children and Families.
I think it would be best if you moved up there and then people who are zooming in can see you and it's going to record better. So and you can bring up anybody you want.
Yeah, would you mind if it's Deputy Secretary? And just so that everybody knows, Deputy Secretary Todd Delo. So he is my boss and the Deputy Secretary to Secretary Jenny Samuelson, who is the head of the Agency of Human Services. She reports directly to the governor. So thank you. I really appreciate having the opportunity to talk to you all about what we're doing in Rutland and trying to do across the state to shelter people who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness. And we do understand the impact that it has, particularly in Rutland, because you've had more folks in our general assistance housing program than in the rest of the state. This is where the hotel rooms were during COVID. We were seeking hotel rooms to put people into non-congregate shelters to protect them, and that program grew. I started as DCF Commissioner just over a year ago, so a lot of this predates me. But at the time, that's how general assistance housing expanded. We've been trying to reduce that program, and this is really good timing because the budget has just passed in the legislature, and we know what the legislature wants us to do with the general assistance housing program and with shelters. So I can think I maybe start there and also start by saying that we agree that temporarily housing people in hotels and motels is not the best plan. It's not a long-term plan. It's not the answer. We need longer-term permanent housing to move people into. And in terms of emergency shelter, those traditional shelters are what we know works best. Shelters that are supported with services, with housing navigation, moving people into permanent situations is what they need to be successful in their lives and not warehousing people in hotels and motels. We need more affordable housing online faster. I'm sure you talk about that a lot here in Rutland Town. I know they do in Rutland City as well, so that we have units to move people into and not just keep them in temporary shelter. So to speak to the current state of the program, we now have a budget that was passed by the legislature, and we know what it funds for emergency housing and for shelters. It does include a reduction in the number of hotel rooms that we are using across the state in the non-adverse weather months. So in the warmer months, when it's not cold outside, as cold outside, we have a cap of 1,100 hotel rooms across the state. That's what was passed in the budget. That budget, I should say, is sitting on the governor's desk right now. He has not signed it at this point or let it go into law. So it's not actual law yet, but it is sitting on the governor's desk. Beginning in September, we have to do that reduction down to 1,100 rooms or by September. So we're going to start looking specifically at Rutland, where we know we have more hotel rooms per capita than in other places in the state. So just so that you know, our plans are to reduce the number of hotel rooms that we're using in Rutland City and in Rutland Town, because it's disproportionate. And if we're going to spread those 1,100 hotel rooms across the state, we want to do it in a way that meets the need of the particular area. And we're going to do that based on population. We're going to do that based on need in the community. And so we know Rutland is a place where we need to really shrink that number. I think we have about 400 hotel rooms that we're using in the Rutland area right now. We know it needs to be significantly less than that. We're making plans to bring it down. The other part about the program is that, starting on July 1, under the new law, people who are in the hotel motel program have to elect when to use their 80 days in a year. So they're getting a limited number of days. For a while, there was this cohort that was in there indefinitely through the legislative process. Now people have to elect when to use their 80 days in a year. So starting July 1, some people who have other options may move out of the hotels, move to other options and choose to use their 80 days sometime at some other time in the year. Some people won't have other options. They'll stay in on July 1, and that 80 days will run out sometime in mid-September. So that's another time period when we might see people coming out of the hotels and motels. As far as, you know, you asked us what our plans are. You mentioned buying the Cortina and turning it into a shelter or turning it into housing. I will say that as part of our, our long-term plans, and I will say we have no specific plans for Rutland. We have no specific plans for the Cortina. But one of our strategies has been that a way to achieve quick, affordable housing is to convert hotels and motels. And we've seen it done about 20 times across the state in the last several years, usually with a small hotel motel. There's one right near where I live on the Barrymont Piller Road. It's happened in Burlington. The Ho-Hum Motel was one that very recently happened. It's a quick and easy and fairly affordable way to convert units into small, affordable housing developments. We don't have any specific plans for that for Rutland at this point in time. We are always looking for opportunities to create new traditional shelters or affordable housing. So if an opportunity comes up, we try to bring partners together to do that. We recently had a conversation in Rutland that was here last week to talk about the Loretto home. And can we get supportive services behind that to run that as potentially a shelter, as potentially affordable housing, transitional housing, a place where people can have services connected to their shelter and move on to be successful and more permanent opportunities? So that's a place where we did see an opportunity. We are looking at it. Who knows what'll come of it? But that's the kind of opportunity that we're looking for. Again, nothing with the Cortina. I think you also asked about a long-term lease. We have been talking to hotels and motels about entering into long-term leases to try to get a better deal for the state, to try to get them to provide services and up their standards. So if we go into a long-term lease with a hotel or motel, and we've done a couple across the state, we guarantee to pay for a block of rooms. They in return guarantee things like a space for providers to come in, service providers, or they guarantee that they're going to add additional services, meet health codes, up their standards within, within the hotels themselves. I don't believe we have entered into a long-term lease with the Cortina. I think Miranda Gray, who is the Deputy Commissioner of Economic Services, can confirm that. But I don't believe we've entered into any sort of long-term lease with the Cortina. Miranda, would you like to chime in on that?
Yes, happy to, Commissioner. So for the record, Miranda Gray, I'm the Deputy Commissioner of Economic Services. And that is correct. There was a letter of intent, which we had engaged in with the Cortina, but the lease is not finalized at this point.
So there is a letter of intent to move forward with the long-term block of rooms at the Cortina?
The lease would be through June 30. As the Commissioner had mentioned, now that we had engaged in this process before we knew what law potentially could be, and with this reduction in rooms, we're having to reassess what our need will be across the state. And as the Commissioner mentioned, we know we don't need as much capacity that we have in Rutland as we have currently.
So hopefully I've answered some of your questions. I know there are always concerns about the impacts on things like your police force or your emergency services, the number of calls you receive when you have that many people trying to live in a small space like that. I think it's, it's over 100 rooms right now at the Cortina. And we do recognize the impact that that's had on Rutland. And we are here to answer your questions, to respond to your concerns, to see if there's anything that we can do as a state to be a better partner to minimize those impacts on the town and on the city.
One of the things that I want to be sure that you're aware of is that we do have a written, written settlement agreement with the Cortina. It is designed and it's stated to run with the land. So anyone who comes in to use the property or to buy the property is going to be bound by those terms. And in fact, we included in it some of the various provisions for amenities, including outdoor and indoor play places for the children, because we know there are kids down there. The meeting space for the services, service providers that come in, maintaining everything in good repair, particularly the laundry rooms, to make sure that there is one secure entrance and that the back entrances, which had been used freely, were alarmed. Alarms were put on them so people couldn't be coming in and out, and that all entry had to be through the front. We asked our health officer to go down and inspect, and he has found, you know, various infractions, including most recently a break in the sewer line so that there was sewage bubbling up through the front yard in the Cortina. We also requested rules of occupancy and being provided with copies of that. And we also requested a criminal background check for people who work at the Cortina full-time and part-time. And we asked them and they agreed not to hire anyone who was on the sex offender registry, again, a vulnerable population down there, including children and the disabled. So anything that you do, I would strongly encourage you to have at least these provisions in here. Many years ago, I was one of your foster parents, and I knew in order to have kids in our home from DCF, we had to go through inspections, fingerprinting, criminal background checks, all of the things that should be in any contract you have. And then one other provision in here that's very important to us, and that is a recognition that this housing is temporary and short-term, and that the ultimate goal of everyone is to bring back the Cortina as a conference center and a hotel. This was a great gathering place. There were wedding receptions, retirement parties, meetings, many, many activities down there. And we'd like to see, it was, it was a vibrant part of the community. We really would like to see that again. We are proud of the model here in town for housing up on Woodstock Avenue. It is a bridge housing program, and it is run by, I think, Rutland Housing Authority, Kevin Lozo and Rutland Housing Authority. And it provides in-house wraparound services for people who have moved from usually the hospital into a temporary facility to learn how to be good tenants and learn how to take care of their homes. That's the model we point you toward. We're proud of that. And we would like to see if you're going to do it, do those things. And please, the warehouse approach, I don't think is a healthy one. I don't think it's helpful. So we recommend all of these things to you, but we want an end. Please. And the Cortina area is probably not the best place to put long-term housing. So with that said, we have other members of our Select Board who I'm sure have some questions, or you might have comments.
And I'm not sure the Commissioner may know this for the record, Todd Delo's Deputy Secretary of HHS chair. Do we have a copy of the settlement, or could we have a?
You can. I just happen to have one with me.
That would be extremely helpful.
Oh, I haven't signed it. But I mean, I did sign the original, so I'm just gonna. Drew did sign this copy.
Thank you.
I did provide a copy to Representative Paul Clifford when he was asking earlier about, you know, what we did. And so.
I was aware of some of the terms of the agreement. You know, I've been to the Cortina a couple of times. I've met with Mr. Satchdev. I think I've met Drew before. I've spoken to people who stay there. When I first became Commissioner, I came down and gathered a bunch of folks to talk to them about what it, what it meant to them. And so I really appreciate everything that you've said. These are the sorts of things that we're looking at in the long-term leases, the standards and the services that are really much needed to, to set people on a successful path versus this kind of warehouse.
You will need to get an Act 250 permit amendment. And the Select Board and our Planning Commission will be parties in that process.
And I just want to be clear. I'm not, I'm not stating any intent that we're trying to convert the Cortina into any sort of a shelter or long-term housing that is a part of our overall strategy across the state as we look at increasing housing capacity and shelter capacity.
Select Board members. Kurt?
I think I'm all set.
Okay.
I think everything's been covered.
Joe?
With regards to the conditions that we put into the agreement with Drew, as far as making available space for state agencies to come in to work with these folks, are state agencies doing this? Is somebody there daily, weekly, to work with these people to help them mitigate that situation they're in? You know, I think most of us all here agree that this environment is not productive to the end goal that I think, you know, everybody would like to see. I know you said it was a temporary or situation with the COVID and stuff, and now it's snowballed into four years later, we're still here, and we still don't have a plan that, and I think that's my biggest, those are my biggest concerns, whether or not these services are being provided to help these people better themselves or find something in a statewide plan to deal with homeless that doesn't use this type of facility and this type of thing. Even if the state bought that place and renovated and did it, it's still not a good environment. I don't think having 140 rooms and 200-plus individuals housed together, the folks that really need those services are being short-changed because the people that are there, and we all know there are people there that probably shouldn't be there, but they can make it through the voucher program. They can qualify and they're there. And there are bad elements that influence the folks that are, that are stressed, down on their luck. And some of the alternatives look encouraging. And I think that breeds some of the problems that our police department has to deal with. Two or three bad individuals out on their own, not a big deal, but when you get them in this situation, and they are, I guess, contaminating the folks that aren't that way. But now this other lifestyle is kind of looking intriguing because what do we got to lose? You know, we're down on our luck. Look at this. And the, the criminal activity and the, and the activity down there is just overwhelming. And I would hope that this would be an example of not, of what not to do. That would be, I'd really like to get that across to the folks in Montpelier, you people to bring back. Putting people into apartment-type complexes where they're still all together, even though they might own them or rent them, it just, I don't know. But I don't know what, and I don't have the answer to that, what we need to do here. You know, with the amount of employment opportunities, you see, people want it everywhere. I'm not sure if this is making it too easy for folks to not want to work, I guess. I don't know. But everywhere I look, there's, you know, help wanted this. And if we could educate folks to a task or a trade or be able to work somewhere and give them some encouragement, that's a whole lot better ways. But to me, it's just like, I don't want to say you're turning a blind eye and throwing money at a problem, but it kind of looks that way, you know, from, from somebody from the outside looking in. You know, the state's dumping a lot of money down there. We're just putting them down there, and hopefully they'll either get better or go away. And I think there's got to be more activity than that, you know? And I hope that there's maybe something out there that'll help, you know?
I appreciate the question and agree with a lot of what you're, you're saying. And I will say the state's position is that this is not the best use of state money. This is not the best way to go about helping people who need help. When we look at setting up a new shelter, we don't look at creating something that's 120 units, because we know that that's problematic. We look at something that's maybe 30 or 40 units is the best practice. And so we are trying to move away from the hotel motel program. One of the problems that we have is we have, we have prevention activities that we do. We have subsidies to help move people into more permanent housing, but we don't have units to move them into. There is a housing crisis. And finding those units to get people out of hotels and into, into other places is, is the real challenge. I would defer, if it's okay with you, to Adam Sanchuk to talk a little bit about the services that are or maybe are not being provided at the Cortina. I think that was your original question was, is the state, are the, are the service providers engaged with the people who are staying at the Cortina now, if you don't mind, Adam?
And we've had consistently staff there. What that looks like with regards to level of engagement and willingness to engage with staff is one of the questions that's one of the challenges that we have. The capacity of that staff, the limited staff. To answer your question, we've had probably three different iterations where we've had at least two to, one to two, two to three staff at any given time that are covering hotels, both in I've got a worker currently, David Delgado, who's in the hotels every single day, attempting to support that work. But it's, it's a challenge. Like, I don't want to misrepresent the challenge there. And part of it is engagement, and part of it is understanding that these are very, these folks have very complex needs, disabilities, other things that, that are, that make it really difficult to engage in services at times. And not, not to their fault, but to capacity issues within, whether it be nursing, whether it be behavioral health and shortage of social workers. So it's complex. And the attempt is there. The supports are there. There's other agencies that are fully engaged in this work, but capacity is concerned.
If I could just add one other thing, Chair. I think you raise a really important point, which is what we see often in these congregate settings, whether it's the GA program or other programs that the Agency of Human Services runs. More frequently than not, the clients for the agency are victims of crime rather than perpetrators. But the point is really well taken that that type of congregate setting can be attractive to a criminal element. And we completely recognize the challenges that law enforcement faces with that, that scope and scale. I know that through Adam and other folks in the city's project vision, that most of the calls they're getting are GA hotel program calls. And what we intend to do in the coming months is increase our ability to have folks who may actually be in the program but are causing some kind of public safety concern engaged more fully in either treatment services or exiting the program if it, if it turns out to be something that is extremely disruptive to the hotel and the services there. And we really want to work in partnership with our hotel providers exactly around that, so that if, if law enforcement is seeing repeat calls for individuals in locations, we're able to, to work with them more closely to determine what's causing that kind of disruption and how we can intervene most effectively.
We see bi-weekly reports from our police department and all, I mean, 80% of the calls are that end of town and that area. So you don't have to look far to know what's going on there. And anecdotally, I hear about once a week from our police chief of yet another time when he has had to go down there and what he has seen and what he has had to help DCF with, for example. So it's a problem. Sharon and then Matt.
Well, first and foremost, I better explain something to you. For 40 years, I ran the open-door mission, which is a homeless shelter. Now, I'm going to tell you upfront, I have four women staying at the mission now who are petrified south of the city because of the drugs, because of the behaviors. No one has even come to us at the mission to ask us, what do you think? What do you think can be done? So we were the largest provider for a lot of years, but nobody's interested in what we have to say. And I'm here to tell you that there are good people down there, but they're all. But there are, there are a lot of people that don't belong there. And they call their friends all over the country to come to Rutland because you get three hots and a cot, doesn't cost you a penny. So you should be aware of that. The mission has run successfully for many, many years, but it's with rules. It's a handout. It's not a handout. And the people of Rutland City respect us because of that. When they can go to the Cortina and they can drink and they can do their drugs, that's not helping anybody, including those that need help. And, you know, I think Adam can speak to the fact that we've always been willing to work with Adam. He's very open minded. His hands are tied because he's told by the state what has to be done. Which isn't fair. We need to take care of these people, but it has to be a handout, not a handout, doesn't work. The women that are staying there now were petrified down at the Cortina, absolutely petrified. When I go down shopping in the Green Mountain Plaza, I won't go without my husband there. This is a woman that spent forty years of her life working with the homeless. But I won't go down there and, and shop without my husband in the car waiting for it because it just, and the people down in the stores down there have said to me, aren't you a select board member? Yes, I am. Why aren't you doing something about us? I said, our hands are tied. They said they come into our stores. They walk out with clothing. We're told not to stop them because we don't want to get charged or the companies don't want to get charged. So I think that behooves me to say to you as part of the state, wake up. Wake up. You're going to destroy Rutland with this nonsense. If, if you don't make people responsible for themselves, then you can't do the work to help the homeless. I mean, if anybody had come to me, I'd have been more than willing to sit down and talk to you and say, look, can't we try this and this? But, you know, you can be a social worker. But if you haven't worked with the masses of the homeless, you don't really have a clue. And I mean, I've learned over forty years. You know, I treat them like I want to be treated. And I also want to be treated the same way. So, you know, like I said, our shelter is open. We still have beds. But they have rules. And when you don't want to go by the rules and you want to drink and you want to drug, go to the Cortina. So and, and I put that onto the state. I don't put it onto the Cortina. They're making money at our expense. And at the expense of the people of Rutland City, Rutland Town, and some of the good people that are staying down there. So that's my take.
Thank you, Sharon.
Matt.
A couple of technical policy things. So you mentioned that eighty day rule that's in the new legislation. And I just want to clarify something on that if you can. You said they need to elect when to use that. Do they have to use that as a block or can they parcel it out throughout the year? I mean, on July one, do they have to decide, well, I'm staying now for the next eighty days or can they stay for thirty days and then leave and come back later? Or how does that work?
Could I defer to Miranda on that just to make sure she gets it absolutely right? I don't want her to speak.
Yes, happy to answer. So it is the second, people can choose to use their time in blocks. So if they wanted to use it for twenty days and then they were able to access, say, maybe a campground, they would be able to do that. And it's a rolling calendar year. So if people did choose to use their eighty days, if everything stays the same as it is in the budget right now. And they wouldn't be eligible again to outside of the winter, the winter months, we will be housing people, but in the warmer months, they wouldn't be eligible again until July first. If the days, I won't go into more detail, but that is, you're essentially choosing when you want to use your time in the warm month.
Well, and you just, you just touched on my follow up question, which is, it was my understanding that the winter did not count. So I don't remember how they define winter in this legislation, but that's a lot of our year.
December first to April first is the way that's written in the law right now.
So between that and the additional eighty days, I'm not going to do a public math, but it covers quite a bit of your year, almost three quarters of the year, probably. I guess that's an observation more than anything else. Well, I suppose the follow up would be during the winter months. I mean, what? How, how is admission handled at that point? Just anyone shows up and they have to get a specific winter vouchers at night by night? Or how does that?
That, so the eligibility requirements changed in, in this new law and lists, I think eleven. We'd say vulnerable categories. So families with children, people with disabilities, people fleeing domestic violence, those who are pregnant. So eleven different categories. It does not include this. So there is a, a group of, of people who are left out and, you know, for lack of a better term, able bodied, you know, people who don't fall into one of those other categories. So there is a difference in eligibility this year than there was in, in previous years. The cap will be, you know, it's us looking across the state, seeing how many hotel rooms that we have. I know we're trying to look, you know, even in the winter months to make it proportional in Rutland to the population and to the need here. I know there's a, a, a belief often that all of these folks are coming from away, but I think everyone knows that's, that's not entirely true. Some people might be from other parts of the country or the state. But there's a significant need right here in Rutland and we have a, an obligation as a state to address that.
Do you know what the total number of rooms in the program is right now?
The number of units being used right now is about fourteen hundred and fifty. Miranda, do you have any? Is that, is that right?
Yeah, that is.
So that's fourteen, fourteen fifty.
And about four hundred in Rutland.
Right. And that's where in I mean, you're getting towards late May and you got fourteen fifty. So if you got out three hundred and fifty rooms to meet the new cap. It means in theory, over time, people are cycling out of the program. And then you hit winter and the gates are sort of open, or I guess you're still subject to the eleven hundred cap. How does that work?
There, there's no cap for the winter months.
So where would you, how would you find rooms at that point?
Based on room availability. I think we're still trying to figure that out with the new law that we just, that we just received. And I do want to say we're still going to be paying attention to Rutland not having a disproportionate number.
I mean, if we take the Cortina specifically, I mean, Mr. Kumar has got to figure out, you know, how many rooms is he dedicating to this program or is he dedicating his hotel, his entire hotels to the program? You know, if he, I don't know that this can physically be done, but just theoretically, if he says, okay, I gotta, I can only use half the hotel now and I'm going to somehow get half of this back to a regular hotel, which obviously poses practical problems, but if you were to do that and then you don't have those rooms available now for the winter. And so I don't know what the solution is now at that point.
What is your, oh, sorry, Matt.
I have a different question. So if you have one on that.
Yeah, no, what is your proportional number for Rutland?
So we're looking at a lot of different things. We haven't settled on, on anything yet. And it includes conversations like this, but we're, you know, we're looking at the average rate of homelessness across the state, which is, I think, fifty one people per ten thousand. Am I saying that right, Miranda Lilly? I got it again. Well, I'll get lucky. I'm doing math in public now. About fifty one, you know, the, the number of, of people experiencing homelessness that we have in Vermont, according to, to the, which count do we use for that, Lilly?
This is a HUD generated number from work that's done as part of an annual point in time count. And then HUD generates a report that comes up with the fifty one per ten thousand as a statewide rate.
So that's one way of, of looking at it. We're trying to use multiple data points. So fifty one per ten thousand. So you base that on population by county or by district. And we see that, you know, that would mean significantly less than four hundred households in Rutland. We're also looking at the percentages of uptake of economic services benefits. And we realize that's can be skewed by the number of people who are in the program here in Rutland. So we're trying to, you know, massage those numbers and say, okay, that's, it's a pretty high percentage in Rutland compared to other parts of the state. How do we take that into account? So looking county by county, region by region, those are a couple of the things that we're looking at to try to right size the program in, in the different areas of the state based on need and population.
So, oh, I'm sorry. It's back to you because you had some follow ups. Yes.
Well, along the same lines, if you subsequently are looking at you know, either hotel conversions or some other projects to create more shelter or transitional housing. Would it be fair to assume, and based on your comments, that you would be looking for proportionality for those as well, that if you do, you may do a thirty to forty room unit, as you mentioned here, but not multiple of them in the city or.
Yes, that's all, all part of the calculation, you know, in some parts of the state, they have more traditional shelter bed capacity. So we look at that as part of the overall formula for shelter for that region. So if something like the Loretta home were to move forward and we had, you know, fifty beds available there, we would put that into the calculation of how many beds are needed and we could reduce other areas like hotel rooms.
Because I mean, there, there are a lot of follow on effects in addition to what, you know, the town has experienced that's been mentioned in terms of the crimes and so forth. I mean, that also spills over to the hospital, you know, if they're providing free care to folks that come in. And that's not something that you know, we're, we've covered under our agreement with the Cortina. That's something that they're just having to to deal with, which obviously affects their budget formulas and push the costs off onto the
That's right.
Other, other places.
It's a different part of the human services budget.
Bring, bring some more folks to the.
Let me ask you this. With the money that you're pouring in per bed, per person at Cortino or wherever. Would it behoove you, the people to begin with that are working, but living at the Cortina? Because to rent an apartment, you've got to have, wouldn't it behoove you to, in fact, buy pieces of property, not warehouse everybody together because that's where you get the problem. But buying up property and then having people earn the right to own that property with, I mean, you can get the modular homes, but not warehousing with fifteen or twenty of them because that's where your problem.
I, I mean, yes, Sharon, I, I completely agree with that. And the challenge we have is a limited resource.
But you're spending a ton.
Absolutely. And, and I think if we were able to draw a perfect plan, it would involve the shift of paid for hotel rooms to conversions first to a form of supported shelter onto a permanent supportive housing similar to the Woodstock Avenue property that the chair referred to, onto a longer term supported environment for individuals or independents. The challenge in building that system, as the commissioner has said, is we in Vermont just don't have the units even to begin moving people. And we look to converting other spaces. We look to moving, whether it's a long term.
But if you're doing the Loretta home, you're warehousing again.
Well, I think what the Loretta home plan, I'd, I'd let the commissioner speak to that, but I believe that the, the Loretta home plan is not, as you pointed out, that kind of social isolation in a room. It is much more of a staff shelter where individuals through our Office of Economic Opportunity at DCF would be accountable for the rules of shelter, would be accountable for the conditions of occupancy in that space and ideally would be moving from there after a shortened period of time to a supported environment where they were essentially because many of these folks have been unhoused, unsheltered for years. Having the supports they need to learn how to live in community, like we hope most neighbors will. And so we recognize it's, it's not as easy as flipping a switch and saying you've been unsheltered for years, you've had, you've moved from an encampment to a hotel, back to somebody's couch, back to a hotel. Now here's your own apartment. That is a hard environment for people. And so we want to create that spectrum of care. And again, the challenge is we're also tasked with sheltering thousands, hun- thousands of households at this point, and, and trying to do both in a limited budget environment is extremely challenging.
I think Joe had something and then Matt.
I, I just, you've been, the numbers that you're describing, so about four hundred rooms are available in the Rutland area. Is that a product of the need in the Rutland area or the availability of the rooms?
It's availability of the rooms. So we're talking about the need being smaller.
But we're moving people here from other areas because the rooms are available.
I, I think that did happen.
Yeah.
And maybe does still happen a little bit, but we're consciously trying not to do that. And, and we know we need to reduce.
Then the other question I had was is this area like the most concentrated number of rooms in, you know, Rutland area? Say, is there as many rooms in the Burlington area or any other community? Or are we like top of the list for having this many?
I'm sure there are more rooms in Burlington, but there may not be the same availability that.
Yeah, well, no, what I'm saying is the number of rooms that are occupied by the homeless that are part of the voucher program. Is there any other community in the state that has this many rooms in the program in, in an area? Or are we like at the top?
I don't know what the Burlington numbers are, Miranda, if you could, could speak to that. Other than Burlington, though, you would be.
I mean, that is, you know, there's a much larger population in Burlington, but I don't know how that worked out.
Yeah, Rutland is at the top. We lost capacity in Burlington because of some of the motel conversions into permanent housing, which is, is great. But that is something throughout the pandemic that we did lose some capacity to be able to shelter people there.
So, so this is kind of a unique problem to us, having this many folks in this smaller community trying to survive and, and, you know, their impact on other businesses and stuff is probably out of proportion to other areas.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
That's, okay.
We got to, we have to start building our budget for the next fiscal year this fall. And from what I'm hearing is there's not going to be a fix to this in the, you know, by, by July first of twenty twenty five. So we should just plan on some housing at the Cortina continuing for at least another year or two. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's a fair statement. There's no, there's no quick fix. There's no short term solution. We will continue to advocate for more housing so that in more shelter beds and less reliance on hotels. And then we have that conversation with the legislature and we see what units are generated and what are available. And we're paying attention to drawing down in, in Rutland.
We have another unique thing and, and that is I think Rutland County has more elderly than other parts of the state, including some of us here. And if we're sheltering the homeless, there may not be room for elderly folks who need to move into assisted living.
We need more assisted living.
So I, I guess I'm concerned about the whole mix and I hope you, you, you are looking at everything and talking with your colleagues and other state agencies so that programs that will pay grants and forgivable loans and loans to work on housing will be shifted to this area to help us out. And you know, part of the big picture and not all your agency, but it should also be other agencies and state government who are helping us here in Rutland.
I mean, the challenge of sufficient long term care facilities, assisted living facilities. It also sits with the Agency of Human Services and, and the Department of Disabilities, Aging and Independent Living, and it is absolutely a main focus. The challenge is both the physical plant and the staff. And the staff in turn relies on housing units availability. And I think there are some creative solutions coming out of some developers and other folks looking to partner with. some developers and other folks looking to partner with Vermont State University at Castleton or or other entities where in a perfect world, we would be encouraging those young people to set out on a path that we would help fund their education to move them into social work. Allied Health, teaching, law enforcement, corrections, et cetera, and providing them the places to work so that we retain our young Vermonters and we we meet those workforce challenges. But of course, all of those pieces really do hinge on housing and having units, and that's
Well, if you're talking housing and elderly, why would you turn the Loretta home, which was for the elderly into regular housing? I would think priority would be to take care of those elderly first. Because they're the weakest of the group. And I would also think that people that were able to work should have to go to work or, I'm sorry. It's a hand up, it's not a handout.
Matt's got something too, and then I I want to see if our police chief has any thoughts to add, but I'll start with Matt.
That was my point number two, but my point number one. Mary's question was a good segue, obviously, there's not going to be an overnight solution, so in the meantime. You know, I think what our community, I suspect other communities need from the state is support from the state from all departments, not just from yours, so for example. Our understanding is our health officer has been largely stripped of authority as a local health officer. So if he calls in something to the state and says there's an issue, you know, we need that to be respected and addressed. Obviously, as Mary mentioned early on, we have an agreement with Cortina that we've asked them to do a lot of things and, you know, I think we'll have an opportunity here to hear from Drew about where those things stand, and those those are things that should improve quality of life for folks that are living at the Cortina, but from time to time, there are still issues like the sewer coming up through the through the pavement that, you know, need to be addressed and not ignored because we need them to continue filling this role. You know, that's, we don't want to get the sense that the state is just sort of looking the other way because because it's a necessity to have that, we still need, we want the place to be, you know, safe and clean.
We just signed an order for a three thousand dollar payment to A1 Sewer and Drain to deal with the issue of the effluent that was coming up through the pavement, so this is real stuff and and we see it every time we need.
Our highway commissioner could fill you in on some really interesting commentary as to what was going on in the problems down there.
Chair, if I, just one quick thing to Mr. Gaddy's point, so the Department of Health also sits under the Agency of Human Services, and we we work very hard to ensure that there's close collaboration. Because we have a vested interest in ensuring folks who are our clients, who are living in these hotels are living in habitable environments, so there's absolutely work both done. You know, the Department of Health, working with local health officers or otherwise, they have to carry out their job regardless of what the hotel. Whether it's traveling public or the GA program is using it. So there's, I would not say at any point there's a blind eye being turned, we certainly work hard to ensure as best we can with a fairly small staff that that those environments remain habitable.
Unfortunately, our health officer is not present, but I think there have, we've heard from him before that he's made calls and felt like he was not getting
They basically told him that he didn't have the authority to move a person out of a room that had eff effluent and sewage on the floor in the room, that that was overstepping his bounds as health officer. I'm pretty sure that was what he told us.
I'm happy to follow.
And so to to that point, this board will adopt ordinances that mirror what the state. I think that's our plan to give him the authorization to be able to, because you can't have residents, you know. It was almost suggested to us, or maybe a year ago, that the board was unsympathetic to the homeless and that we were trying to get rid of them and we didn't want them, and and it was numerous things. And I don't think anything can be further from the truth as to what this board's mission is. The the care and well being of those people is at the top, that's why all of those conditions are in that contract you have, and that's why our health officer goes down there. Because if things aren't being done to the standard that they should be, then somebody has to be out there looking out for them, and and things do happen, facilities malfunction, and you do have problems, but those things need to be fixed and when you have sewage and stuff like that, that needs to be fixed yesterday, I mean, tomorrow isn't soon enough. And so any stumbling blocks that are in this board's way, we we will find a way around them to make sure that we can find the authority to get things done, you know, I think Drew's been on top of stuff when it's happened, and they try to do the best they can, but somebody has to be there watching out for these people, and we've kind of taken that through our health officer, our police department to to do that. And I don't want this board to ever be accused of being unsympathetic, because that's the farthest thing from what we're doing here. We ask a lot of questions and we make a lot of noise, but we we do have a plan.
So I'd like to hear from Chief Dimas, and then Drew's been very patient, so.
Since COVID hit and early part two thousand and twenty, our percentage of calls was five hundred percent down there, maybe more, I could tell the stats that I'm looking at this morning time. We have, we have a three man department, we have a four man department now, I could use twenty people if they're down for the boredom. And we could probably put a damper on a lot of stuff that's happening down in that area. Let me say something good first, the homeless shelter program has been phenomenal for one individual I know. Bren has been very good about, he's had some mental illness his life, his whole life. I knew his parents, they came from down country, he decided to settle in the mob about twenty years ago and has lived in the woods, literally this whole time, and he stays at the Cortina now, which is, I think, amazing. I'm worried about the freezing up there, so thanks for that. Another thing, maybe a lease program would be a good idea, I'll say this because Drew won't have to worry about trying to keep his hotel filled up and get paid, they have a lease program for a certain number of rooms. If he has a bad egg, it's causing problems for me and the town and our plaza down there, he can say, hit the road, get out, there's no accountability. Either way, first off, Drew loses money if he kicks him out, I get that, he needs to make make money. Granted that they've made millions of dollars off you guys over the last four years, millions. Millions of dollars, and what we got for it is not anywhere near what we should have, in my personal opinion. But if that lease program's there and that's, and there's a a method or a way for me to speak to somebody, say, get rid of them. Because I see people from Pennington, Burlington, Berry, they come to this location because if you look in their history and the cases we deal with in our system, there are nothing but problems wherever they go, so it's, they come on wrong, so now I have to deal with them. And can I tell you, there's only, there's three of us on the road, we have one SRO, so we spend all our time dealing with that issue down there. The rest of the townspeople who are paying my salary and my officers, they get nothing from us. I have a constable, two constables that run radar, thank goodness for them, and handle dog complaints and things of that nature, or we would have to kind of do that all. I've had five burglaries today, and I spend all my time doing that, and probably they're from that area down there, so. Police program might be a way for some accountability. If there's somebody's a problem up north, then why isn't there some method other than the police keeping track of a person in our files to they don't deserve to be housed, that's, it might have been, they're just using us, and they're problems, and wherever they go, they're a problem. They did have a place we used to keep them, it's called jail, but apparently we don't want to put them there anymore, because we can't do that anymore, because they changed the constitution, I'm not real happy about it, I'm an old officer, so I like to live in this work. The new way is, I guess, progressively, but it's not working out the way I think it should at this point in time. So, anything you can do to help us, we greatly appreciate.
You will see that the monthly payments that are made by the Cortina to the town primarily go to pay overtime for our police department. And occasionally, and for our constables who are also special officers of our police department, so that's primarily what we use the money for. The extra policing down there, and and let me add that Rutland Town is a generator of sales tax for the state, I mean, we have a have hefty commercial area down there. But if people are reluctant to shop there, that's going to hurt everybody, that will hurt the town, that it will also hurt the state. So, Mr. Kumar, thank you for being patient and thank you for coming in. We'd like to hear your comments too, you can come on up here, yeah.
Sharon, Matt, Mary, Joe, Kurt, Officer Dimas, and the rest of everyone here. My name is Drew Kumar, I'm one of the owners of the Cortina Inn. Just a few things that I heard, one of them was regarding the sewage. That was of no fault of ours. Yes, there was excessive sewage coming out of manhole, but from way, the way that the the piping was laid out. The sewage blockage was actually towards Taco Bell. Wind River was the company that we hired to remove the sewage, because A1 Sewers literally didn't want to be on the phone with us. They just said that we'll we'll take our time, and we've been using Wind River for several years, even before I was here. I only got here in July and there's a gentleman named Bruce, he also told me that, I already know exactly what the issue is. So it started on the twenty sixth, I believe, on like seven, eight o'clock, it just started overflowing, which I've never seen. So that issue was resolved because there was like this much grease in one of the manholes. And that was towards Taco Bell, because we don't have operating restaurants, we have no oil.
Right.
That's not to say that there's not other stuff going into the sewage, but that was the reason why there was water and sewage coming out and going into the cover. That was the, that was that issue.
Can we, can we get a copy of that report?
Yes.
Great.
And I believe David Sears.
Yes.
He was, he was the first one there on the site, and he told us to take care of it immediately. So I did call Wind River, we we called him that night, the night before, because there was an ongoing issue, because once we saw that happening, we called him immediately. But he didn't have the right equipment, and I think it was like one in the morning when this was, when this happened. So he brought the equipment, and then he said he'd be here later in the afternoon. So all we were trying to do is just trying to clean that area, and all that water was still going into the cover. So once he got the blockage removed, the drain immediately went down, but I will get you that report.
Great, thank you.
One of the main questions I have is I only got here in July of twenty twenty three, but late June. Has there been a reduction or an increase in the number of police calls since I've gotten here? So I'm just trying to see if we're in the right direction or if it's more or less the same. There's been an increase?
Yes.
How much of an increase? And is there something that specifically we should be doing other than what we've been doing already regarding handling certain people? Because we have been removing bad elements from the hotel on on occasion, because we know that there are certain people that, like you said, shouldn't be housed. Which I completely agree with, we've given them opportunity after opportunity after opportunity, and we do remove them, we don't, we don't keep them, we don't want them, and like I said, they do bring a lot of negative attention to the Cortina, and that's something we're trying to avoid completely.
I think that would be and and I know you've got good cooperation between the police department and the Cortina, so, but but to follow up on specifics. Is there any conditions that the state has that make it difficult for you to oust someone who is at the Cortina who presents a problem?
So one of the restrictions that we do have, if we do remove someone before the voucher ends, we have to file an eviction notice, which we've done on plenty of occasions. We do get a phone call from Economic Services saying we have nowhere to put them. And I'm like, that's sorry, that's not my problem, I mean, we've given them ample opportunities for them to change their attitude, change their behavior. I would love not to involve Rutland Town Police in every affair, but it gets to the point where if I have to call them myself, I will call them. But if the state can try to help us remove certain people, I know that there's a thirty day window where they're not eligible to receive an additional voucher if they get evicted. But what we've been trying to do is, we've been just trying to, if they're close to their checkout date, we don't renew them. We just say that, hey, look, we're not going to renew you, and you'll be, you'll be placed at a different hotel. That's not solving the problem, but that at least gives us the opportunity to deal with the other issues at hand, and just give that issue paid. We tell the state as well, this person has been an issue, he's been doing A, B, or C, and we try to deal with that way.
Drew, I got a question for you.
Yes.
Did you get any information from the state on when you're asked how's the person, anything about their background, what what happened?
All we get, when we get a phone call from Economic Services, they just tell us how many people are in the households and if they have any pets. And that's pretty much it, and we get a name. So there's no, it's like they have some children, we'll know exactly which room we can put them in. Because we don't know exactly how many people are showing up, if it's two adults and a pet or three children, or if there's more than four people, then they usually get two rooms and they have to be adjoining, so that's the only information we do get.
You don't get any information that they were a problem, or they were required to come here? Is that something the state?
We do have a DNR list, so we do reference that before we accept the voucher. So if that name does pop up on our DNR list, and we've had an experience or another hotel has had an experience in the past.
Do not rent?
Do not rent, yeah, sorry, do not rent.
There's another connotation there.
The do not rent list, and if we see them on our list, we don't take the voucher.
Okay. Okay.
Chair, would it be okay if Miranda, Deputy Commissioner Gray spoke a little bit to when people are moved and what's what we call POI, period of inactivity? When that's enacted, it's not, we're just constantly shocking the people, people do get
Right, but I do want to make sure that we hear Mr. Kumar's remarks, would you, would you rather hear that first or?
She can, she can, she can go ahead, that's not a question.
Thank you, yes, so we do have behaviors that do warrant people to have a period of ineligibility, and so that is thirty days where we're saying we're not going to house them anymore, and that is if they're putting people in danger. We are pretty reliant on our motel partners to let us know when there is a behavior that is unsafe. So that is what we rely on, we cannot share with motels people's backgrounds. Really, we're just looking for a room for this individual or family. And understanding that people have their own requirements when we work, we also place people into shelters, and there are requirements that people go through to determine who's a good fit for their establishment or not, I just thought I would add that as well.
Back to you, can I ask a couple of questions on the indoor outdoor play play places for the kids, have you got those set up?
We have a trampoline, we have some slides, I'm gonna order, I've ordered a couple basketball hoops for the back. We moved all the cars that were parked in the back towards the front. That way, that back area is specifically just for children, especially when the weather gets warmer.
Okay.
It'll be a lot nicer for them to have at least an area where they can play, and we have camera coverage, so we know exactly what's going on.
Okay, and the security on the back doors and the alarm system?
It's a work in progress, we have, we've replaced two or three doors already, and I have an order for, I replaced last two, three weeks ago, we're getting other fire rated doors. So it is a work in progress.
Okay, criminal background checks for your staff and nobody on the sex offender registry on your staff?
Yes, so everyone that is, no one's, everyone has a valid work permit that was issued by the state. So everyone that does have one is is okay at the moment. We did, we did verify with everyone.
Okay, for both.
For both, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I have a question here because I have a lot of contact with the homeless, and I have to disagree with you, there have been people down there that shouldn't be around children.
I completely agree.
They're allowed.
Well, the thing is, we don't have people's, yeah, the employees.
Well, if the state is allowing that, then shame on the state. I don't care what you say, children are vulnerable, we owe them better than that.
Absolutely.
And if people are going after children, they can sleep outdoors as far as I'm concerned.
We have, we don't get any information regarding We have, we don't get any information regarding who is staying there and what their background is. But we do ask, we do have, we do check any of our employees. So that is one thing that we do. But we have no idea of verifying where a certain individual or a certain person has come from or what their specific background is. And there's no way to check for it either unless we do a valid background on pretty much everyone at the hotel.
So you had other things that you wanted to comment on as you were going through?
I mean, it was just, I was just pretty much listening to this conversation. It was more trying to understand what we can do as a hotel to alleviate issues that Rutland Town is facing and also the Economic Services and ECF, what we can do to help with that as well. So I think this agreement that we have in place is a stepping stone that we can use to kind of help with that. But like you said, we don't have a plan in place regarding how we're going to be able to move people into more affordable housing and permanent housing. So if that's something that we can help with, we'll definitely help with. We know we work with Brock and homeless prevention. That is one of the requirements to get a voucher. So as long as every person and the voucher program is working with an affiliate program, especially in their location, I believe Rutland, there's only two. It's Brock and Brock Action and Homeless Prevention. That that's a stepping stone for them to help find housing. So that's one of the things they have to do.
I I remember speaking with some of the folks down there when we were there for the site visit and many of them said, yes, we're waiting to hear. And they had signed up with the housing group, so they were waiting.
And then certain people have actually been able to find housing, which I've been is a blessing. And they have been moving on and they found a place and they've now they have their own place they call their own, which is the overall goal at the end of the day.
And you're anticipating, it sounds like, based upon the letter of intent, that there will be housing of the homeless at the Cortina for probably another year or two?
I can't speak in longevity, but I can say for at least till the end of the year. Because I know with the winter coming up, coming up, we're over in July. We're in the summer, sorry. Yeah, until we have something in writing or some form of action that we can also talk to the state about and talk to you guys about. We don't have an idea when this is gonna this is going to change. But I think it's a fair assessment to say maybe one to two years.
All right. Any other select board questions? I think our chief has said his bit. Any follow up from the state folks? Okay. Well, this has been a good session. I guess two final questions. When do we hear from you again? And it can we do anything? How do you want us to be in touch with you and so that we know where this is headed and what we can do?
Thank you. I just want to say thanks again for the opportunity to actually have a face to face conversation. I thought it was important that we be here. Adams, our eyes and ears on the ground here in in person. So if if you do need further contact, state Adams is the place to start. We are looking at how we're going to reduce numbers in Rutland. And so you'll be hearing from us in the next month, two months. July first is when the new rules in eligibility goes into effect. Deep is when we're supposed to reduce to eleven hundred rooms, but you'll be hearing from us before then. I think meanwhile, if there are any opportunities for traditional shelter space that you that you have that come across your desks and something that that comes to mind, we're happy to run those down, explore them, see if we can support them. Because as we've been saying, we'd much rather use traditional supported shelter options than than hotels and motels. I do want to, you know, it's been a good solution for the time being, but it needs to be something different. We need to start working towards something much differently than what we've been doing the last four years, as you've all pointed out tonight. We're happy to come back. If you'd like to have us back, either in person or virtually, if you have any questions, you should could contact any of us.
Okay. Well, we we do appreciate the time you've taken to come in and speak to us and and Mr. Kumar as well. Thank you for coming in.
And I'll leave my contact information. I would love to hear more about the local health officer's experience.
Yes. Okay, great. I'm sure he'd be willing to share it. We also have on our chair of our planning commission, who is also a member of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission staff. So they've been very involved in housing issues. So you, you know, that's Barbara noise pulling. So we're we're connected there as well. All right. Thank you all. Safe travels home, folks.
I just had something to ask you regarding the the sewage. It wasn't something that I discussed. They, I'm definitely giving you the report.
Okay, thanks.
They said they, Wind River said they spoke to someone from the Rutland office regarding that and they said they were going to take care of it, the bill.
So they could have spoken to Dave Sears.
Okay.
So we'll we'll check with him when.
And then, yeah, we we took care of that issue immediately and everything was done.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Have a good evening. Okay, so we have done A and B.
Motion to adjourn is not in order yet.
Oh, no, you can't move to adjourn just yet.
Well, we we could.
I think we'd have department heads that were somewhat disappointed.
Wouldn't be appropriate.
So let's start with our order. We'll hear first from Marcia Chaffee, Town Head Lister. Good evening, Marcia.
Good evening, Mary. The only thing I have on my agenda this this meeting is the extension of the marching of the grand list. We're still waiting for for state agencies to send us information. I just, tonight, barely tonight, I got the veterans exemption. But we are also waiting to hear from other agencies.
Okay, so that should be in our packet. Letter E, Joe advises. So this is a grand list extension request. We have done these before for similar reasons. And it looks like you're requesting a thirty day extension that will still have things done before July first. So I will entertain a motion to approve the extension request. And if you folks would be so kind to have me or someone sign as.
Says Chair.
It does say Chair. Okay. Motion's made.
Sorry.
And seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the extension, please say aye. Aye. Are you? I'm sorry, Sharon, I couldn't see you. You okay with that? Thank you.
Matt's too big. He hides me.
Well, you know. Okay, so that's in the folder, Marcia. It's all taken care of.
Thank you.
So we also have received on our desk a letter from Jack McCamley, Johnny McCamley, tendering his resignation as Lister. With great thanks, Marcia, to you and Marie as coworkers and and all you've done in there. But Jack is basically juggling quite a bit and he has decided that he can't take on his chores as Lister along with all of the other things. So it is with real dismay that we receive his letter of resignation. I didn't look up the statute, so I don't know. But you had a word or two for us, long range, Marcia, on what we should do with the Lister position.
Well, I do have the statutes online. I looked them up in anticipation of of this. And it is Title seventeen, which is the elections. And what it reads is lack of elected Lister, appointment of Lister, elimination of office, hiring assessors. The only, the the only thing I highlighted here is the Select Board may appoint an assessor to perform the duties of a Lister set forth in Title thirty two until the next annual meeting. Well, I don't think that we are going to appoint an assessor at this time. Right now, Marie and I are embroiled in a lot of, a lot of things, namely the VTPI, NIMRIC, KAMA, all the components of the grand list that we're having to deal with and coming together. We've been out doing many, many site visits. And we still have two major site visits that we have to do, namely Starbucks and Splash Holdings. So at this point, I can't see where bringing someone in new at this point is going to be beneficial to to our department.
Okay.
If we appointed somebody.
Yeah, Joe's.
If we appointed somebody like we did last year, prior to the special election, then they would be only appointed till that special election again. So even if we appoint somebody, we should wait till we get past these special.
Well, there's these special elections and there's the August primary, then there's the November general election and then.
And it's, and I do believe the statute says that the next election, right?
Well, that.
Would have to run.
You, we would have to go, we would have to go until the annual meeting, which would be next March.
Yeah, but see, that's not what we did last last spring, Marcia. If you remember, we appointed Marie to fill a vacancy. And then we had to have the special election for the Public Safety Building. And because there was an election, she had to run for that position. That's what, that's the way it turned out. So she was only appointed for like two months. So anyway.
So well, we'll, we'll, we'll check the statute. I keep getting it mixed up with what we have to do for Select Board members.
Right. But I was pretty sure that's what happened because we did it for the two positions. Actually, it was the Lister position and the Tax Collector position.
Okay.
So we might want to.
So, yep, Matt?
So, Marcia, just to clarify, is it your recommendation to the board that we not appoint anybody and that you and Marie can handle things until the next town meeting?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Marie has been a very quick source of learning. The two of us have gone out and we have assessed six new builds. We've also assessed out buildings, garages, decks and so forth. And the only two large that we have to do now is the Starbucks and Splash Holdings. I've been in touch with the Burlington Assessor because Splash Holdings, excuse me, has built a Echo Vermont car wash up in Burlington. So I'm hoping to get information from him so that we may assess our building, which actually will only be assessing as of April first of this year.
Okay, well, anything, any follow up, Matt?
Thank you.
Okay. So thank you, Marcia, and thank you for that recommendation. And we'll take a look. So I have the statutes in my mind, too. All right. Anything else for Marcia Chaffee, our head Lister? Nope.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Marcia.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate you, board.
All right, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Not much going on in the fire department this last month. Been very quiet, knock on wood. We are going to participate in a couple of parades on Monday for Memorial Day, one in West Rutland, one in Pittsburgh. Other than that, I have nothing to tell you unless you have a question.
No, it's just that I think I need to have call a meeting of the fire committee just because we're coming close to the end of the year. I did send out a memo to all department heads, asking them to kind of take a look at their expenses and their, to the extent they have income in their department. And make sure we were on track. I took a quick look at yours and fire seems pretty much on track, I think, so. But still, it would be other committees event and I should have a meeting of the fire committee, so.
Yeah.
Try and set that for you.
I got something to bring up too in a committee meeting, so if we could have one, that would be good.
Okay, you're usually available, what, after three thirty or so?
Yeah, three thirty or four. After four is best, really. Four o'clock, four fifteen.
Okay.
Do I hear four thirty?
I can be there four thirty.
All right. Any questions for our fire chief?
I hope you didn't jinx yourself, Christopher.
No, it's only when I say things like that that I jinx the department. Yeah.
I said knock on wood, so Mary wouldn't talk, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Thanks.
Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening.
Hi. Couple of things on the list tonight. Let's see. The office is going to be closed from Thursday of this week until Monday of next week, given that Monday is Memorial Day. It will reopen on Tuesday at eight thirty. That is posted on notices around Town Hall. And I noticed it's on Facebook. I would like it on the website, like on the homepage. I know it's on the calendar. I think it should be on the homepage. I could just.
Could we do like a banner notice just until it's? Yeah, thank you. Is this going to be eight thirty now from your your opening hour?
No, I'm taking some days off and Susan is going to be coming in on Tuesday at eight thirty.
Gotcha.
So next, actually, let's go to the third installment of taxes. We, I can at this point say that it's an average amount that is unpaid. We don't have the exact number because we're still processing. Some late payments, some, we're still kind of working all the numbers. But it looks like every year we give the delinquent tax collector around two fifty, between two fifty and three hundred, delinquent taxes for the fiscal year that have not been collected. And right at this point, that looks like what will be handed over to him. If he's listening, that's not an exact figure, so we'll have the exact figure. My plan is to give him the warrant on the twenty ninth when I'm here. It usually goes to him on the twenty fifth, but that falls on a Saturday and it falls within the time that I'm going to take some time off. So I'll give that to him on the twenty ninth.
Thank you taxpayers for making your payments. We appreciate it.
So, right. You'll notice in the orders that the school gets their third installment from the taxes. So that is the adjusted figure from Lewis for the year. The packet has his calculations and my calculations in it. And so speaking of the school, we have another vote coming up for the school budget. This will be the second vote for the attempt for the budget and that will be on the thirtieth, which is next week on Thursday. So.
Did you guess the materials in time?
So we'll have a little bit of a, kind of like a period of this is what I know. It's short notice, so the. the warning was just given to me. Um, I spoke with Christine McGinnis from the school central office. Their practice is to put the warning in the Herald once. Um, so they are, they're putting it on in Thursday. I reached out to the Herald and I asked them for additional days. My worry, and I think it's public, but my worry is it's such short notice and we aren't going to get the word out to everyone that we're having this vote. So I asked the Herald to put it in three extra times. Um, it'll be in on a Saturday and two times next week. I also asked to make it larger because I remember some people were having a hard time reading the number last time they get the Herald. So it's going to be in person. The polling places will be open our regular times from seven AM to seven PM at the school and here. The ballots are not getting mailed out. You will have the opportunity now that I have the warning to ask me for absentee ballots. What I do know is I have a handful, more than a handful, about seventy people that requested an absentee ballot for all elections throughout the calendar year, and that includes any special elections like this. We just printed the ballots out today and we'll be working on getting those out in the mail tomorrow. It's tight. I mean, it is tight. There. My suggestion, if you're listening to this, is number one, either try your hardest to come in person if you really want to be heard on Thursday, the thirtieth, or um, if you are able to get out, and here again, I worry about those people that can't get out. Um, if you're able to get out and you know that the mail is going to be slow and it's going to be slow getting to you and back to us, you can come into my office and vote in person on the days that we're there. And that is also limited. Um, so it's a, a little bit of a stretch this time. Um, I do know that some people from the school board are going out and going door to door um, explaining what's happening. This is what I've heard. I've also seen them at the transfer station handing out posters um, of information. I, the only thing that I want to say to that, and I'm not taking any sides at all. I just want the information to be out there. This that you're getting is solely educational information, meaning examples, anything on here, it deals with just the education rates and education numbers. Be very, very, very careful to understand that this is not your full taxes. The examples are just education. You, we are part of that and our numbers are not figured into this.
Right, the town budgets are all passed.
Correct.
And we will set the tax rate after July first.
Absolutely.
So this is just the education portion of the tax.
And I just caution those people that are relying on this to just know that that's
Okay.
part of it. Good information, just it's part of it. It's not the whole thing. Um.
Can I ask a question on the voting? For if people come into the office, is that something that Susan can handle if you're not here?
Um, so basically it's going to be Tuesday, Wednesday and Tuesday and Wednesday they can come in.
Yeah, for next week, because then Thursday they.
Carrie, when are the ballots available? Are they available now?
We printed some today, so they can, they can technically come in tomorrow if they wanted to, if they hear this.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they know, I, I don't think this will be out there for tomorrow, but anybody calling, we always offer that, that they're available. I do want to put a tiny little bit of information out there that I think primarily the, the the swift timing of this is due to having enough time at the other end if we need to have another vote. I also caution people hearing otherwise to try to get the correct information. Happened to hear some other things and it's not true. Um, they, I think the planning is just part of it.
The, I think the lack of a budget on July one will make your job a lot more complicated. So we're shots at those probably better if they're necessary.
Yes. Um, so that's what I know about this election. Um, if you have any questions, ask us, we'll try to answer them. But I do want to say, if you have questions about the school budget, ask the people that are on this poster, because this is their stuff. Um, I can answer about the actual day and what that's going to look like, but that's about it. Um, so let's see, taxes, election office. Um, I know that there are a few items on the action needed that are directly impacted by me and information. So I don't know if you want to do that while I'm up here.
Um, we have, well, first, let me, let me take the easy one, which is um, a liquor license request. Did you see that?
I did, and I printed it off. It's, um, it's only for, it's not even called a catering. It's something I've never seen come through.
It's a one, one-time event. It is a request from BRICS and Colin Fingon, who owns BRICS, and it is for the Spartan Arena for one day, which is May thirty first. And it is a, it's kind of a catering request. Yeah, an outside catering request. Full disclosure, it is for the Rowland South Rotary Club's annual raffle. I'm a member of that Rotary Club. Matt's a member. Sharon used to be a member. Um, it is to raise.
Has been.
It is to raise money for charitable giving, including a lot of grants in the area. So it isn't to our personal benefit. Um, so with that disclosure made, is there any motion on the liquor license request?
We'll do approve second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
To consider still available.
But not many. I sold another one today. All right, I'm going to sign on the second page and pass this around. All right, takes care of. Got that one. All right. The Personnel Committee met with Carrie to hear her request. It was kind of a joint Personnel Finance Committee, but this portion was for personnel. It was to hear Carrie's request as Town Clerk and Treasurer for a pay. Well, it's a pay request, so. Matt and I were there. Do you want to state your position on this? We could take it in an executive session. We could take it and, and that's kind of up to the board to decide.
Us and her. Sometimes these things are done in private, but it's up to you and the rest of the world, but.
I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that one first or the other things. I had about five of those items circled that directly deal with me.
Okay.
Being a longer item.
Okay, so Jay is Board to discuss special election for the school budget. You've pretty much covered.
I pretty much covered it.
Okay. Just a note that the Board of Civil Authority did meet and we've got ballot clerks and ballot counters, um, including Matt and I, and I think Sharon is back up if, if you run short.
She did. Yes, absolutely.
Oh, the, the town finances through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, Carrie has included in our packet, the financial numbers. I sent out an email to all department heads, asking them to check in, see how your expenses are going and how if income is relevant, how the income side of things are going as well. So I'm hoping that as department heads check in, they will let us know those things. Um, and that was my intent to kind of, and Carrie's suggestion was to look to the department heads. But with that said, um, you have received the printout from Carrie. So if you, it's part of your packet. So if you have any questions that come to mind as we're, we've got less than a month to go. Are there any matters that you've noticed that you have questions for Carrie about? Matt does, okay.
So I struggle a little bit following these just because of the way that taxes kind of go through these reports. And so I guess I'm wondering if you have a sense of where things stand, particularly with respect to the general fund, uh, where we typically have a surplus, I believe that offsets our other budgets. So you have a read on where we are?
Uh, honestly, I think the general fund is okay. Um, there's, uh, so we, we have not allocated the, the third installment of taxes in these reports yet. These were done before our orders today. So um, that's going to give each department more money to work with, um, in the end. I was, I, I hesitate to, to, to talk about each department because again, I'm not on I'm not within each of their, their items. I don't know what they're doing as far as what their plans are and, and how they've spent their money and why they've spent their money. For the most part, anytime that I have to to write out a check or anything that is out of the ordinary, I go to the meeting minutes and usually it's, it's there and, and I have that as proof. But having said that, I know you're asking about the general. I think the general is doing okay. We're going to. I honestly don't know. Because each department is kind of over, except for, I'm going to say rec is doing okay, fire's doing okay, highway has their over. There, well, no, they have their carryover.
Got the carryover.
Right, and then, um, well, then we have the police department.
Relates to another thing.
But, but that's the, that's the Cortina money and that I have all figured out too. So it doesn't look as bad as one would think.
That was my hope. But you know, some of the, the departments, I haven't, you know, I kind of looked at the ones that I'm on committees for, and those are a little bit easier to suss out just by looking at the total expense lines. But then, yeah, they're, each one has its own special issues.
Right. What I have seen in the overall common denominator in each one is the lines that you would expect that are going over because of inflation are going over because of inflation. And it's not just in one department, it's across the board. So we've got, um, phone lines are, the, the communication lines are over, fuel is over. For some reason, we might have calculated social security a little, oh, uh, wrong for some reason, and that's going over. And then, of course, this isn't this year, but we're looking toward the healthcare going sky high.
On the social security thing, is that a significant number or?
Going over, or is it? I think we just did calculations a little off or we're adding uh, more, we're probably, you know, we're adding more hours for some people and that's kind of making some lines go over too, because you're taking social security out of any employee that's working.
Yeah, so like the police department, if they're working overtime, that's, so we're not talking about a major.
Yeah.
We're talking a little, little here and there.
Yeah. Okay.
Unless anybody has a question.
Thing, Carrie, like if you're paying, well, when you get into the social security, there's a number for the regular pay, but then if you start figuring the Cortina, do you go back and take, you know, that special patrol?
Whole different follow-up.
So while they're getting paid, but you still got to take the other stuff out. And does that come out of the regular budget or you try to take that?
Or are you still banging your head on the wall?
No, no, no. Um, I took all of Friday and for anybody trying to call in on Friday, sorry that I didn't answer the phone, but it took quite some time actually to figure out the Cortina money against the police. Spent a good portion of that. Um, so without getting into tedious, what I do to do, to get that. First of all, I don't know if you want to go in to that line.
Well, that is age. So the Cortina Settlement Fund is here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So basically we have money coming in from the Cortina, right, that I keep track of. And then anytime that the police officers are doing their special detail down south, they have a se- separate um, timesheet that they keep track of that we then have a separate, um, line when we do payroll. Um, so I have money coming in. I have money going out to those officers. There are certain expenses that were allocated with that money that the select board approved. So we have to take that into account, those actual numbers. Um, I know that the Tahoe and anything in the Tahoe, um, were full Cortina money. Um, so we take that into, um, account. So the money in, then the money out for those two expenses, payroll and the actual Tahoe money for the fiscal year, we're left with, and this is not final, so I still have more to say. Um, a hundred and forty thousand, five hundred seventy six dollars. But you then, we as a board discussed in December that we take how much time they spent down there and a percentage of that, whatever that percentage is, we came up with. I believe you, we had three scenarios with the officers, if it's just, let's see, if it's all of the percentage of all the PD working together or if, um, it's just, uh, the three main officers that go down there or the three main officers plus the, um, constables. And when you discussed this in December, you decided to go with the higher percentage, which would be the, um, three main officers and the constables. So we then have to go and find all of their time and put it into the spreadsheet. And, um, I did this from July first until right up until now, May fourth, I think was the last time we did a payroll. Um, and then uh, how much time they've been working total, like their total amount of police officers, no matter what they were doing, police officer hours, no matter what they were doing. This time, and I have all the backup here, it comes to about seventeen and a quarter percent as an average. The highest, um, in that category that you asked me to use, the three main and the the, um, constables. So that's seventeen and a quarter. I then go to their expenditures for, uh, what is on your sheet, which is to date, their expenditures are six hundred and forty five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. And we, according to what we've discussed with Andrew before, we do not include SRO, so we take that out. We take the, um, the line here of overtime out because we're already putting it in another place. We don't want to double dip. And then, um, And then, um, in this equation, I took out all the vehicle expenses, because we already we took that into account up here. We come to, if we subtract those amounts out of that expenditure amount, we come to four hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred sixty-one. And then, um, we take the percentage of time, because this is what Andrew suggested, the seventeen and a quarter, and apply it to all of the remaining expenses. So we take seventeen and a quarter against four sixty-one, that's another seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars that we have to take in account out of what we had as a remaining balance for the number that I told you. When we subtract that out, we have a balance for this fiscal year of sixty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ten cents until June thirtieth.
That, that's in the Cortina fund, right? Now,
Cortina.
They're paying monthly into that, right?
Correct, and they are up to date on that, and we have not yet received the one for June.
So there'll be an additional
Correct.
Twenty plus thousand.
Correct.
So the total, can we, um, looking at it another way, what would be the total of Cortina funds that would be applied so far into this budget? Something sense for, so for the expense, well, we know what the expense allocation was, you just gave us that, but then the, what was the, um, how much did we get in? That we know, what we were, so the hundred and forty thousand dollar number you gave us was the balance prior to the expense allocation. But that was also net of overtime and the vehicle, right?
So we've got, right, so the total, if you want the numbers, the total revenue is two sixty-four six twenty for this fiscal year from July first until now.
That's what they've.
That's what they've given us.
Okay.
Then you less out the payroll, which from this fiscal year is sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Two hundred and, I'm sorry.
Two sixty-one, uh, sorry.
No, payroll is sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. And the vehicle expenses, that's buying the Tahoe and outfitting it, that was solely approved by the select board is sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and five cents. Net those all together, you get one forty-five seventy-six.
Okay.
So the Tahoe expenditure won't be repeated.
No, we did not repeat that.
So it is basically for, um, the, the, the payroll is sixty-one thousand, two fifty-two for eleven months?
It's July, yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright. We have two more, two more select boards until the end of the time.
Ten and a half.
Okay.
Because you got one, this payroll, this pay period wasn't there.
That's not in here, and then two more.
And then two more, so there's six.
You and Andrew are okay, I mean, this, the seventeen point two five percent is basically the overhead of running the whole support in the department to support the officers who are out there. I mean, that's how I, I thought of it anyway, yeah.
That's, that's the above and.
And you folks are okay with that percentage seeing it now applied? Uh, I don't, I, I, I'm okay with doing all of this. I, that was your decisions that you guys have made and what you wanted for, for that money, so.
Okay, and you see, oh, go ahead, Matt.
Well, no, I'm gonna go, you go first.
Is there any, is this okay, or is there any warning flag that you see coming up? I don't see Ed using that much, um, money in payroll each month.
Okay.
You, you, you're not gonna spend sixty thousand dollars in four weeks.
Not when you spend.
In payroll, no.
Sixty thousand in ten months.
Right.
So here's the real question. This is, I'm gonna ask Joe's question before he does.
Okay.
So the, what, the way I understand it, um, working this back the other way is we got about, uh, seventy-nine thousand on the expense allocation plus sixty-one in payroll plus sixty-two for the vehicle. That all comes and change, comes to two hundred and three thousand dollars and change. Police budget right now is not over budget on expense by that much. So if we do make an accounting adjustment that adds that much money into sort of the police budget, then you'd have a surplus, which has potential knock-on effects.
Because that would be applying Cortina money to, gotcha, okay.
In the past, if the regular police budget was overspent, then we took it out of, we took it out of the general, which was basically the one percent additional, if we had any access, that covered any overtures in the regular budget. And you're trying very desperately to keep the Cortina money separate from the regular money.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so as long as, so when Ed's operating budget to four hundred or five, whatever we budgeted for this fiscal year, if that goes into the red, the, the accountability from that or the, the reckoning comes from the one percent money. That, that's always been the way it is. So if we have more one percent money, this is what kind of threw me for a little bit of a loop, like last year, I think we had three hundred and fifty thousand, I would have some number, but I believe the police budget was over some. So we took some out of that one percent to cover that additional costs. And that, then that's always been the way it is, because the police budget is so volatile that it's hard to.
But the, the issue we're gonna have.
Calculations.
It's really, yeah, you, you, their budget is almost like a best guess estimate, because you don't know how much crime you're gonna have, you don't know how much work you're gonna have. And so there's even some regular stuff that isn't Cortina stuff, right, Ed? Yeah, so that's, that's why I think when that one percent money was set up, it was done that way intentionally.
So my question then is, wha- what do we do with accounting for the Cortina funds? And did we do? I mean, because we have a whole separate discussion of if and when we hire another officer, which was something.
We had allocated fifty-eight or sixty thousand toward the hiring of an al- another officer out of the Cortina money, but we didn't do that. I believe we did.
And I think it was more than that for next year.
It was, it might have been more, but at least that amount. And then, then Ed wasn't able to find something, so we haven't theoretically spent that money.
Right. Balance is what the balance is.
Right.
But I guess the question I'm raising is what happens if adding the Cortina money into the police budget puts the police budget in the black?
Because I don't think we do.
Can we, can we reserve that, those funds instead?
He keeps it separate.
Yeah, I don't think you, you have to keep it separate. You can't add it into the budget. So the, the direct patrol expenditures in that seventeen percent is like the overhead. So you have a, a direct patrol amount, whatever numbers those amount to, and then you figure another seventeen percent for, in whatever the overhead, and that's taken out of the Cortina money also. And that's what helps to, that's what.
I understand, that's all that, the numbers that I was adding together.
Right, so we're trying to keep, we have to keep the Cortina's money in that direct patrol separate from the um, other budget. So a lot of the police department's calls are to the south end of town, but they're within the regular budget and the regular hours. And then the additional direct patrol is the extra expense. And I don't think, um, they don't overlap. So we wouldn't be putting any money from Cortina into the direct, into their general bu- their regular budget. That wouldn't be appropriate.
No, but that's what we're doing, because we're paying seventeen and a quarter percent of their overhead, which is already budgeted.
We're saying that they're spending a certain amount of time on the south end, which would be in this case, for this time period, seventeen and a quarter percent. And the certain lines that are, um, that are directly affected by that are the lines that we are applying this percentage to. It's just a portion of it. Um, because you can't, there's no other way to say, well, we use this amount of paper on this report and, you know, they can't nitpick. Um, so it's just a, a general way, an easier way to kind of make it fair in a, in a, in a way. I don't think you're taking into account the SRO on your figures. We, we do not, um, we don't include her in our, because she does her own thing. She's not affected by this. She doesn't.
I know, all I did was add the, the things, the the, um, the payroll that you figured, that you mentioned, the, uh, vehicle expense and the expense allocation. Um, so I guess my question, and maybe it's Andrew's question, is how we.
Of the direct.
How's this get reported? I mean, in a sense, what we're saying is.
You know, like the operating or the.
We spent this money.
Social Security, Beamers and all of that stuff.
It doesn't really affect the police.
And, and it all, because you're paying that. Will be to each individual, you can't have separate.
Because of these things that we're paying for.
I don't know how that will show up in here.
So we'll offset it a little bit by the Cortina money.
It's a complicated system.
Right.
But what, that, what was that? I guess it's my issue, is, uh, offset.
Are you concerned if we have a surplus?
Yeah, are we, are we inadvertently funding the capital improvements line at the end of the day, because we applied more of this money than we actually need.
Okay, so that's the question.
That's the big question. I, we should only be funding our, we should only be transferring over what our overage is in the budget from the Cortina.
And I think he takes into account that this reminder, this is the second year that we're doing this. The first year was extremely fuzzy, if you remember.
Yeah.
It was, it was December when we finally came to a, a, a conclusion with this. Um, so this will be the actual clear year where the report in the town report is reflective of
I guess.
Some clear numbers, and he will not mix them because they are, um, restricted funds, as he puts it.
So I guess what I'm wondering is, should the amount that we're applying be the lesser of the calculation or the budget deficit?
Yeah, did we choose, did we choose the wrong, the wrong percentage calculation?
Remember she chose it because she, I remember the conversation, you guys came to a conclusion because you wanted to make sure you're using and showing use of the money and not saving it. So that was the conversation.
Well, I guess if we get bit this year, then we might have to modify our plan for another.
We're using, we are, I mean, part of the reason it's this high is because we specifically bought a vehicle.
But that vehicle came out of the lump sum seventy-five thousand from the year before that we were sitting on. And then we've had one full year of them making payments, and we're into our second year now. So I think we're, I think it's actually getting managed. I, I know what you're saying, that if we put too much into the overhead portion, will it show up that, oh, well, now there's, you know, ten thousand more in the high, or police budget than it should have been, but I, I.
We have vacancy savings in the police department because we didn't fill that extra officer position.
Right.
So that.
Money wasn't in the, the operating budget, though it was in, it wasn't in that operating. We, we said we would pay that as a board, we agreed to hire that officer. So if we don't hire that officer, that money should still be in the Cortina fund. Um, our calculation of seventeen and a half percent might be too much, but I don't think it'll be enough. It's not going to be thousands of dollars that the police budget will be over.
A part of what and what is right now, I mean, but part of what we're, what we've also trying to figure out simultaneously is you know, what funds will be left to potentially hire the officer in the next budget, which we did contemplate doing and budgeted for, and I don't remember precisely what the number was. But we want to make sure we have at least that much.
We take out the vehicle expense. We've got most of the money to hire the extra officer, because a big chunk of Carrie's calculation is the purchase of the Tahoe.
And obviously, we're continuing to get paid, but we're also considering to incur overtime. So, yeah, because between overtime and the seventeen and a quarter is what, uh.
So the other scenarios, uh, that there's, remember, there were three choices. And the, um, the three main officers that go down there, um, that percentage was sixteen point two six to use, not very far off of the seventeen and a quarter. And then if we were to consider using a percentage of every police officer and Lynn, that's all the employees, that's twelve percent.
Yes, the part I'm unclear on, maybe I need to discuss it with Andrew, is how this gets reported at the end of the in our report.
Take a look at the town report, how he put it in the audit last time. He likes to do, uh, restricted funds, and he makes sure that the buckets do not, and I'm using his words, do not mesh.
Yeah.
Need to resolve.
Yeah, no, we shouldn't be combing when.
Well, because we're what, seventy, seventy-four and sixty, rough, rough math between payroll and the seventeen and a quarter.
Explain what you're.
The, the overtime payroll amount was sixty thousand.
Yep, payroll, payroll is sixty-one, two fifty-two.
Yeah, fast math. And then the, uh, the percent seventeen a quarter is, what'd you say it was, seventy something? The seventeen.
Of the expenses that we, yeah, it's seventy-nine, six, nineteen.
So that's.
What do we take in seventeen and a quarter?
So that's a hundred and forty thousand.
Every line minus the, every expense line minus the SRO line minus the overtime line and minus the vehicle expense line.
Okay, so we're taking seventeen percent of the actual police budget amount in a, taking that seventeen percent out of the Cortina money?
Yes.
So we're moving a hundred and forty thousand dollars into the, into the police budget from the Corti- Cortina fund. But the two hundred and three thousand. Well, yeah, but minus the, the purchase of the cruiser.
Right.
Because that's, that's whatever, but in terms of the budget as it stands, we're moving a hundred and forty thousand over against this budget, and the budget's only over eighty-one thousand.
When he does the end of the year stuff, and I say he, because he gives me the final number for the sweepover, he makes sure that this is not part of the surplus or the, the, um, deficit of our budgets. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, because you're eighty to forty, you're sixty thousand dollars difference, so I want to make sure that we're not essentially sixty thousand dollars on the good side, and that sixty thousand gets swept to the capital improvement fund.
And that came onto the Cortina money. That's what everybody's concerned about.
That's where we don't eventually become offset from, yeah, yeah, where we could hold that sixty thousand in the Cortina fund and use that in the future. This would be an ongoing issue because of the expense allocation, because we budgeted pay for that full expense of the department ourselves. So if we're allocating a part of that, this would be, continue to be an issue. Uh, unless we're, unless we limit our allocation to the overtime specifically and other special expenditures.
That doesn't make much sense to me, because we need the overtime down there to deal with the problems that are down there.
I know, I'm saying, that's, no, I'm saying that's.
I want to try to hold as much money in that Cortina fund as possible.
We're on the same page.
Yeah, because I want that money to even foreseeably go past the Cortina ending even.
Yeah, anyways, um, something to think about, maybe we need to have a committee meeting or ask Andrew how this comes out at the end.
Yeah, it's a head scratcher.
A little bit confusing, not, hey, but thank you for the information, it's very helpful.
That's good, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure we answered any questions here.
You know, let's.
Nothing simple about that one, yeah.
Let's keep this on the agenda for next time, and it's the question of allocating Cortina money toward the police department. And maybe we can get, I mean, it, it sounds like we, maybe we need to look at another number, like the twelve percent.
Maybe we're setting too much, yeah.
And so, okay.
Thank you for the math, though, Gary.
Yeah, that was great.
You're headache.
Okay, so, um.
Seems like it should be simpler than that.
I would, I would like to, like it to be.
No comment.
I don't know, you know, with such a good idea, and then it's like, how did this snowball into such a?
Um, no, no comment.
Whatever you.
Okay, so that's.
Just about it, just look out the window at that cruiser.
That sort of takes care of the Cortina settlement fund, at least for now. At least we have a handle on how much we're talking about. We did, did you want to sit in on the comp time policy discussion too? Honestly, can we just go quickly over the childcare contribution thing? Yes, please. Okay. So, um, there was a webinar today, not as extensive as I had hoped. It was literally ten minutes and then about forty-five minutes of questions and answers from this is what I got. Um, so, good news, everybody. More money's coming out of our paychecks. Yay.
Whether you have kids or not.
Whether we have kids or not, every
And where, where is this money going to be spent?
Okay, so, ready? So, starting July first, there's something called the Vermont Childcare Contribution. And any employer, um, is to pay a portion of, uh, wages to the state of Vermont, basically to put in a pool of money for people to, that need to, um, access that money for their childcare needs, even if we as employees do not have children that need childcare, we are to contribute it, contribute to it.
And those of you paying childcare will be paying twice.
If you don't qualify.
So, um, it is for every employer, um, it is, let's see, how do I say this? I know the number, it's, um, point four four percent of, um, wages. And that means that, um, the select board has to make a decision before July first. Because the employer can elect to pay all of it on the behalf of each employee. Or, um, a third of it and the employee is responsible for, um, point one one percent of it coming out of their paycheck. So either way, we did not budget for this for next year.
Correct.
And it's happening. And where it's coming out of, I don't know.
Do you have a estimate of what the number would be based on payroll?
I knew you were gonna ask that and I just had it at one o'clock this afternoon and there's no way to come up that quickly with those numbers.
Yeah, you'd have to take, just to get a random thing, take all of the employees gross and then multiply it by whatever number we decide to choose.
All or portion. So we would need to know quarterly gross wages and then Cause it's reported out quarterly. Right, so then we could do the math on either point four four percent if we choose to pay the whole thing and see what that would cost the town. Or the point one one, and that would be That would be on the employee. That would be on the employee. Would be point three three. So
So we're paying three quarters.
That's correct.
Or all or three quarters.
So my inclination philosophically would be in the long run for the employer here to pay the whole thing. But I think we should wait on making a decision until we have an estimate of the quarterly, wait, because we have not budgeted for it for this.
Because it runs into
Those numbers.
Basically, right, please fire highway in general.
I can look at those numbers and see if I can come up with some sort of estimate for next time that we meet. Okay, so
Guess that's the best you can do. And is it basis, based on the growth?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Point four four.
So if we're paying out what, sometimes we report
Like, I'm trying to figure that in cents per
Well, they used an example of a twenty thousand dollar employee. That doesn't exist, but anyway.
Now we're back to nineteen fifty.
Correct, um, and it was a payroll every geez, it was eighty-eight dollars per I want to say quarter. I don't know. I'm gonna have to look at that closer, but they did give us an example.
One percent, one percent on a hundred dollars is a dollar, right?
Right.
So point four four is forty-four cents on a hundred. So at a thousand dollars, you're going to be paying, so somebody making a thousand dollars a week, you're going to give, it's four dollars and forty cents. If you're making, so that's roughly how you could figure it.
Yeah.
So if you had a employee that's making fifty-two thousand dollars a year, you can multiply the fifty-two times four dollars and forty and you're going to be somewhere up in the two hundred and something bucks.
If you're making sixty grand, it's two hundred and sixty-four dollars a year.
It's about forty, it's about forty-four cents per hundred.
Don't think, I mean, it would be good to add it all up, but I don't think it's something that's gonna
Well
We got a lot of employees.
Take the, take the total number of payroll, just go right down through and then multiply it times point four
Absolutely, that I just did a twenty, again, a twenty thousand dollar salary and per year it's eighty, a hundred dollars.
Yeah, sorry, you got what?
Isn't it twenty thousand dollars? One doesn't exist.
Right.
But, um, actually, no, it's zero, zero. It's eighty-eight dollars a year, so that was per year.
Right, so, so basically what Matt, so at sixty thousand is three times that, which is the two hundred and sixty-four. So
See, if you had twenty
The rough number is, we go through the town report, see what everybody made at your growth and add that up and then multiply it and you'll come up with a number.
I think it's
Think ten grand?
Ten or more.
Well, now that we're, we're paying firefighters and all that and
Yeah.
Group of people that do not get this, um, here would be the lifeguards, not say because of their age.
Any, anybody that you're taking out, I think social
Withholding.
Tax, anybody who's taken withholding tax out comes out of it, which includes the firemen, it includes highway, police.
Everyone except for the lifeguard.
The clerks, everybody, everybody that's
Us.
Yeah.
Yep, so you have to take that whole total payroll. Cause I think that we could
Shouldn't theoretically
Budget out of the, out of the, um, one percent money, but we, I don't know how, if we
We'll have to get some calculations for next meeting.
Okay, so
Have to look at the quarterly reports and
I'll dig out a town, town report and go through page by page.
There's the quarterly reports.
Which is the town share of the Vermont Childcare Contribution on for next meeting.
We send a letter to the state of Vermont and ask them to ask for the input of the public before they start passing things like this.
Actually, you'll be happy to know that Brian Collmore came in today.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I really like Brian, um, but let me just tell you, I was not shy about telling him how we feel and neither was another department that he visited here as well. And so, just so you know
You know, I don't have a single problem with this money. I just don't think it's gonna go where it's supposed to go. And I don't think the people that need it are gonna get it.
And that's sort of the thing that's
You know, it's, it's just another pool of money for those that know how to work the system to get into.
That's right.
Got it, Joey.
All right, so that will be a fun topic for two weeks hence. And thank you for flagging it.
And the other good news you got?
Well, well, do you want to talk about my pay?
I have one question before that. So, um, Kerry, um, while we're talking about
Oh, boy.
So fund balances, but eventually we'll get to Eventually, we're gonna get to Mike.
For you, but yeah.
Mike is gonna ask us about the sprayer, so that was a capital improvements question.
Oh, yeah.
Have an update on the capital improvement.
So I'm gonna say what I reported in the finance committee, um, as this. And I believe that you received an email from Mary that reiterated this, so publicly, um, talking with Andrew. There's a couple of things, again, really great news. So, um, I was asked to get a balance for the capital improvements fund. And while it sounds really easy, it's not. So, um, over the years, it, it It's going to be a project and the reason being is this, over the years, money has been, um, asked for from departments and, and granted by the select board. Um, and then projects have happened and then fiscal years have finished and surpluses have happened. And so in essentially, we have we have income from the surplus. Then we have expenditures that were or were not said, okay, by the select board. And then we have maybe some things that were bought with the promised money. So in the end, it sounds like this. It's a project because we have to go back in time and look at all of the meeting minutes. And we have to find out who asked for money, was it documented? When was it asked for? How much was it asked for? Is the project still going and was some of that money used yet or was it all used? Again, it has to be all documented and then put in a spreadsheet to then figure out, okay, each year we also put in some money from the surplus, what does that leave us with? Um, so it's gonna take a team effort because, um, it's not a, it's not an easy project. We have to first start by going back in minutes and what I was told is if it's not in the minutes, it never happened. So is that something we can help? So you don't have to go through? Yes, I would like some help, um, select board wise, bill wise and department heads who have asked any money. Um, be
That would be the easiest way, cause I know we did like eighty or eighty-five thousand for the trail.
Correct, I remember some of it because I was here for some of it, but we have to find proof.
And a hundred and twenty-five thousand last fall.
For the highway.
Or whatever for the
Correct.
For the highway truck, so, or whenever, two years ago.
Okay, and then
Those are two that I remember.
Exactly, me too.
And then there's a bolt load or a fair amount that we allocated to the public safety building.
And that's where the question started.
Yep.
Um, we need proof of how much in writing was allocated. I know that it was talked about, we have it on paper, but was it put in the minutes? And if it was not put in the minutes, then it never happened. So we know for a fact that the budget for the capital improvements was a hundred percent fact on the ballot. So we can use that money, which was seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. But we talked about an extra lot amount from that fiscal year, but was it ever voted on? Passed in a motion and put in the minutes. Cause that's where this whole thing started. I was trying to find out how much we had to work with for the public safety building before I tapped into the bond.
Okay, so how far back, I mean, if we're asking department heads, for example, to go to report on what their request for how far back do people need to go?
It's a good question. I don't know when capital improvements started, first of all.
About twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
Twenty, so Mary was elected to the board in twenty fourteen. I believe that was the year the surplus was found. I believe the vote was in March of twenty fifteen. The only reason I knew this is because I've just gone through numerous town reports to find the warning that allocated this for other reasons. Um, so you're looking at about nine years.
So going.
It, I believe it was voted on in twenty fifteen and it took, would have taken effect probably with that budget year, so that would be July first of twenty fifteen would have been when the first amounts were put in. And it was a necessity at that point because of that surplus you guys discovered. And there were the, the allocations for cash to open, paying the bond for the station.
Right.
Um, the building of the highway garage.
Yeah.
Um, I think those were the three main players where that
Those were, I think, on the ballot.
Those were all on the ballot, yes, those were all, so if you look at the
I have plenty of resources for that.
But if you look at the twenty fifteen, um, ballot items.
Yeah, and the, and I have, yeah, we have all of that stuff.
Cause I have all the town reports back to like when time started, so
I'm sure you do.
And then I look through these to find, well, I wanted to find when it was allocated and exactly how it was worded.
Um, so when I, so moving forward, uh, in this project, when I get kind of a baseline of where, where, where should we start here? Um, we need just keep thinking, and I'm just saying this to everyone, not just the select board, we, we need to keep a paper trail of everything like we normally do. But anything even for this, like, so you asked for, um, like maybe twenty grand for a certain project. Did you spend any of that as a department head? What did you spend it on? And here's the invoice for it. So I need all of that proof. Um, and then that's gonna be another fun, um, binder and spreadsheet project that I'll add to
Then there will be an, then there will be a
Ongoing. Yeah, okay.
Cause I think that we might have paid for the renovations to the town clerk's office out of that.
So it sounds like what we need rather than
A hundred grand for a fire truck?
Um, rather than guessing, yeah.
I think engine three was two
But I do believe we voted on everything.
Well, I, I And I think, I think if we start with the minutes, and that's going to tell us um, because I think we were pretty clear when we said capital.
Minutes at home from all of the meetings.
You know what I do?
I go on, I attended the meeting phone phone, I have this box of minutes.
I go on, I go on and just go back. That's when I discovered we were missing six months worth of minutes, but that's when
Bill, is there any way to, like, if you're searching that in the thing to, you know, like some searches you can do? If, if you use keywords, is there a way to, that it won't work?
I have the list for the last, for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Of the minutes that include the word capital improvement, I've looked at them yet.
Okay.
Uh, the purchasing policy, which your copies of, in the back of it has history of depreciation and capital improvement votes. Capital improvement vote says twenty fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got about nine years of research to do in order to give you an actual number to help you out.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Process point, so
Maybe we hire somebody specifically to help Kerry and Bill research this. If there's somebody out there that wants, that's good with a computer, it's got the time to sit down and look through stuff. This is a, this is a special, like, I mean, it's important.
No, I agree.
You know, if we could find somebody, I, I've got the word out to anybody I meet, asking them if they know anybody that wants
You just have to, then you look at the search results. Going forward is, what would be the best way of making sure that when a decision gets made, that it gets translated onto the spreadsheet?
I love that, uh, question. It just, Andrew and I have this question quite often because while I attend most of these and listen to a majority of the time that I'm in here, I miss a lot. Um, and the communication just has to come to my office in important, I, I don't know what the best way is, but anything that affects my office, uh, financially, needs to come across my desk somehow.
We make a form.
So we, we
Sticky note.
Well, a sticky note would be
We spent this much money tonight. Expenditure, is there something that we could fill out, something we could, something You know, it's like all the policies that the town adopted over
Did you eat the whoopie?
Twelve years I was chief and my nine years as board member and Bill's still trying to find the policies, remember? You found a lot, but we adopt policies, but they went into policy limbo and nobody knows where that, where did it go?
Everything, well, you're right, everything that's current is in that book.
Right, yes, because we found out we had this big shark coming of adopting things in that, right?
Okay, well, we got two things going forward. And how can we communicate clearly to the clerk's office that this is a, a financial something?
Yeah. Does Andrew have any suggestions? How would real businesses do this?
Yeah. There's lots of forms of communication. I, I don't know, I don't know if we wanted to discuss, you know, I think that's a topic for another night. All right, so that's the going forward. All right, so that's the going forward piece we need to solve, but we need looking backwards so that we can answer some of these questions like how much is in the fund? And Andrew and you both need that for the audit that he's working on, obviously, too. So back to Bill. Is that, have we been able to flag? I mean, you've done one year's worth. Did it take very long?
It's not complicated. It just, it just, the process is just
Time consuming.
Get the list, go through the list, open them up and look at what it said.
A lot of reading.
It was a lot of reading.
All right.
A lot of things, so.
But I think that maybe we need, you know.
Can you, can you do a year's worth, maybe two years worth and tell us how much time it takes? Okay.
Could potentially have the whole thing done, but by the time we meet next
Well, I know, that's possible, too.
It's possible, yes.
Do you, does anybody know anybody that can help us with this?
Well, it's not that because of the person, then it's okay.
I think it should be internal right now. It's financial stuff. Yeah, okay. Give it a shot. Let's find out how much time it takes. If it's one of those where
It takes longer than doing the minutes, he's in trouble.
Yeah, yeah, right. You know, so I mean, maybe we could each take a year, for example, if we needed to. Or two years.
It is, but it is.
They go. They give you the list. There, there's some ways to do that. The last, certainly the last.
I think.
Okay.
And we get to those, so.
Okay. Give us a shot. And so on the agenda for next time is flagging capital improvement fund expenditures. And that will be both for what have we done in the past and how can we make it something that gets translated to Kerry's office in the future. Okay. All right.
Sticky note.
No, we're not going
And stick it to the orders. Hey Kerry, we blew a bunch more money tonight.
Item C under action needed. My suggestion in my email was we shouldn't be spending anything out of the capital improvements fund for the balance of this year until we know what's in there.
Spend the money for the sprayer until after July first anyway. I think that was a plan, right? Well, yeah, once we had a, once we had a figure.
That's the case, then I'm no meeting, no report. I don't, whatever. There was no rush, rush, but I didn't want it to get pushed off.
Right, and I think that was what we decided two weeks ago that we would wait.
That's more important than
We need to come up with a balance.
We, we do need the
And it better be plus side, not negative side, because we're gonna look stupid.
Okay, so it looks like item C hold over the purchase of the sprayer for the rec department will hold over until
Yeah, I thought we talked about this last time, that we were gonna wait.
But then there was, wasn't there another figure that came in, a different figure for the sprayer itself?
That's what's, that's, yeah, I, I did, I did find a, another alternative. On another vendor that was, that's in the packet.
Yes. Are you a Northern Tool and Equipment member?
I, we are now.
We are? Because I pay that every year. So if I could, you know, I'll buy it if it's cheaper, but
Well, we, we, we have a, well, we have a charge account with them now. The only way they would do it was credit card, and that was not a wise use of a credit card for a purchase. So we have an account we can charge it on, so.
So this is back to rec committee. Do we want to take it up now? It's on our agenda. There's an open question about how much is in the capital improvements fund. What's your pleasure with item C?
Put it on hold till we know. I make that motion.
Motion to table item C.
We can't spend it.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded to table item C. Right, yeah.
You probably shouldn't spend it. I don't know what I did with my minutes, I go back and read them again.
Okay, well, we'll stick it on the agenda. We do have a slightly different amount anyway, so let's stick it on the agenda for, well, it's it's tabled, so it comes on the agenda every time until we finally deal with that.
Right.
All right, all in favor of tabling item C, which is the sprayer purchase, please say aye. Aye. Okay, Sharon?
Well, I'm a little bit confused. If we need the sprayer. My problem is this, Mike Rowe never asked for a damn thing.
So the minutes from minutes from the last meeting, meeting read. Discuss the purchase of a sprayer, which would be mounted on the track. The cost is forty-six hundred seventy-five nine nine. This could be used on all town properties. Initial cost was proposed to come from the capital improvement fund. We will contact D L C C to see if there are any liability or any restriction for town employees doing spraying. The balance of the capital improvement fund needs to be known as well. And I believe that's what we talked about before, because we have agreed to buy the sprayer from the capital improvement fund. But we had to find out if we had the capital improvement fund funds to do it. And Kerry has told us that because of lack of paper trail, we don't know how much money is in the darn fund now. So we aren't saying no, we're still gonna buy the sprayer, provided the funds are available, which I believe they will be. And we just gotta know. Um, it's a wise decision to not spend anything out of that fund until you know what it is. And I think we had that, I thought we had that discussion last week. And that's why we said, okay, we're gonna say yes to Mike, because we're gonna buy this, but we need to know how much is there. We spent almost a million dollars out of that fund for the public safety building.
That's what scares me a little bit.
Right.
That's
And we were basing it on what we thought we knew for expenditures and what we thought we knew. And Andrew's told Kerry that thinking isn't as good as, yeah, we need his writing. So we're gonna do it. And we're gonna come up and say, oh gee, we didn't spend anywhere near as much we got.
Motion carries four to one to table.
All right.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So that leaves with Kerry, item F, town clerk and treasurer pay request. Right?
Correct.
Okay. So Matt and I met with Kerry and um, she posed two possibilities to us, and I should probably let you pointing out that the unanticipated work due to the two special elections on the school budget. And the I, I think it's fair to say the cutback in hours of the other person working in your office, plus the inability to find the staff person that we had budgeted for, but you haven't found the right fit. All of that has created you working more time. Okay, so I've summarized it correctly. So you have two proposals that you wanted the select board to consider. So why don't you go ahead and?
Um, so, as you know, the workload has certainly been much more these days. Um, so my two proposals are this, it's an either or or situation. I could continue work, well, I could work my forty hours as a salaried person. And leave at my time and just drop the workload at the door and go home. That's one proposal to to do that as a salaried person. The, what will end up happening with that scenario is the workload's already backed up and it will continue to back up. The other proposal is I'm usually here beyond my forty hours. Any, eh, at any given time. I work um, at home. And I work beyond my hours here. Elections especially, I am here for multiple hours. And I'm not paid for it. It's been said in the past that my position is expected to do that. But the workload has in, uh, it greatly increased and I am proposing that any hours after my forty hours, I will work a time and a half to make sure that the work is caught up. And my office runs efficiently.
Back come up with an hourly rate? Do you have an hourly rate for time?
I do not have an hourly rate for that.
And it would be basically, like, you know, that's the one thing about when you run into salary positions, it's hard to sometimes get what you need done and
But there is a state law. That, that, that is set right. But if you go over X amount of hours, then you have to pay time and a half.
I mean, I don't have any
I ran into that. And why would you be exempt?
We don't have time.
Is there something in the legislature statutes that that prohibit we, us paying her overtime?
I think we have to research what our authority is. I think my understanding right now is that her position is exempt, is an exempt position under late wage and hour law. That means she's gets salary and that's, that's it. You don't get, you're just, it's an executive function. You're expected to, you just have to do the job. Now, I don't disagree that, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and say the positions, these, about two positions, town clerk and treasurer, I've never thought we've been overcompensating this position. I totally sensitive to that pack. I just don't know what our authorities are in terms of
So before we make a decision, do we need Kevin to research what we can do?
Yeah, to give us the, the extent of our authority. And we also have
Shut the door at four o'clock and go home.
We're, we're trying to work this through.
Well, I understand, but it seems like it's certain things for certain people and certain things for, different for other people here. So it seems like it's the Mary and Matt show and the rest of us don't have an input.
No, no, we met with Kerry as the personnel committee.
Well, I think it's extremely unfair that the rest of us, well, never mind.
Sorry, but that's what the committee structure is about. We
Committee? You don't even let us have our committee meetings. I'm fired. You tell me that we, oh, we gotta have a fire meeting. Why didn't somebody some, come to me and say?
Uh, we haven't had a fire committee meeting.
That's what you told me.
We haven't had, we haven't had one. And we need to have
So anyway, let's get to the point here is that we need to find out what we can do as a board to um, compensate Kerry for the extra hours. I'm hoping our hands aren't tied by some statute somewhere that says because you're a town clerk and treasurer, you get to work eighty hours a week at forty hours pay, because I don't like that.
You gotta adjust the salary rate.
Somehow we gotta adjust the salary rate, or does that position have to be salaried and should it be hourly?
Good question.
So these are questions, yeah.
Set her hours, okay?
Yeah.
And, and she has, and that's fine. But the other thing, in addition to finding out whether we have the authority, is keeping in mind that we've already budgeted. And so a question to Kerry, where, where would you see the money coming from to take care of the overtime?
So you did pose that, and I did bring that up during the committee meeting. So the third person line this year hasn't been touched. Theoretically, has not been touched. The extra elections are going in the election line. So for the next, if, if this were to be approved, which it sounds like you guys will have to talk to the lawyer, so that's gonna delay it a little bit. But for the rest of this fiscal year, I could tap into that line. And um, because I'm willing to work the time, if I have time in my family life, because that comes first. To come in and do extra work on the weekends if I have time, or if I'm staying over, it would come out of that line. Next year, um, i- in the next fiscal year, I do believe, and I'll have to look again closer, that it will come out of Susan's line because she reduced her hours. And I think we budgeted for full. Not certain there.
We could still, we could, in my proposal would be that we could take it out of that extra person line until such times you hire somebody. Because once she hires somebody, we're not gonna need the extra hours she's putting in. In other words, that, that office looks like it needs about a hundred and ten hours a week, would be my guess. So how we finance a hundred and ten hours is, it's, if it's, it's actually in the budget. We have two forty-hour people plus, yeah.
Yeah, I mean
So the money is probably there. It's just my question, my concern is only illegal. It's not whether or not we pay. I think the payment is there.
And, and here's, I mean, I brought up, I mean, you're welcome to listen. It was a public meeting. It's videoed. Please listen to it and all of my points, but I am not like the rest of the salaried people in this town. And all I want is to be treated as such. I cannot leave when I want to compensate hours if I work over. I'm a public office, as you know, and if I close, I like to let people know ahead of time, but I rarely close. Because it really does not, number one, look good, and number two, make people believe in the office, that, that they like to have it open to do their business. So I cannot scoot out of here if I work an election until ten o'clock at night. I can't compensate those hours. Because number one, my second person isn't here all the time anymore. And number two, I can't close the office. So I'm not like the salaried people in this town, and if there's a legal matter about it, I am willing to fight tooth and nail because I have been here till two in the morning before on free time. And I just don't see me doing that for a long period of time anymore with the amount of
We're not talking about fighting.
That's what I'm
I mean, I'm, I said, I, I'm in, have no problem with paying you for the extra hours you work. I just wanna make sure we don't do something that comes back to bite us. Because we could probably vote right now and you'd probably get five votes to pay you time and a half for extra time. And then find out that somebody up in that secretary of state's office says, no, 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 you can't do that. So and we, and if that's the case, then we gotta figure out a way around that. So we can compensate, and there's got it, there's usually a way around everything, some way.
The other thing we have to keep in mind is, in the way you're thinking about it is, you know, the overall budgeting for the office, we'll have to look if we make a change, we have to look to the next fiscal year, because the budget is set to that fiscal year.
Like I said, that, but that fiscal year budget roughly covers a hundred and ten hours. I think you had assumed, if I'm not mistaken, about thirty hours for a part-time person.
Yes.
And there was a set rate. Now granted, that set rate would be less than what you would be compensated at, so it would be less hours, but the money is there in the twenty-five budget. Just how do we go about doing it without doing something that's not in? So there's gonna be a delay, which is never nice, but
Right.
And then it may also be possible that if we get uh, permission to do this, I don't know if you can pay retroactively, you know, back.
Well, I'm, I'm, so a question is, at what? And, and I wasn't clear on this when we talked. Where do you want us to go back to? Do you want us to go back to for the overtime? Have you kept track of, I guess that's a fair way of putting it. Have you kept track of it?
Every single time um, I work, which is every day, is on my time sheets from when I started, and every minute is on my time sheets. Which is why it's so important for everyone to be truthful on their time sheets, please. Because we need them for reference. So yes, you can go back to mine and look.
Would you want us to?
Yeah, right.
How retroactive, if we can do this?
I think, let me think about that, because I'm not, I, I hadn't thought about that. I was thinking moving forward, but um,
So, um, are you suggesting there are employees that are submitting false time sheets?
I am just saying, from this point forward, just make sure that you are using it like from this point forward, just make sure that you are using it like I use it. I can't always remember what I've done on a day, so I clock in and I clock out on the same day that I'm putting on my time sheet. It's truthful. It's there. No questions asked. Okay. I think it's a good practice for everybody. That's all I'm saying. All right. Okay, so that is a question for Kevin.
Yes, yeah, I think we need to find out if we're authorized to do this. If it's not a if there's no something out there that prohibits us from paying our town clerk and treasurer overtime because she's got to work, you know, the board vote is there, then I think you're gonna the board supports it. It's just you know what I'm getting at, Kerry.
I do.
I'm not saying no.
I'm hopeful that um when we ask our attorney that he's he thinks about it swis- swiftly because I I don't wanna see this. Stacking up on this play. I understand that. Yeah.
And I don't know.
Tell them this is something we want them to move to the top of the pile.
I mean, is that something that you could ask the secretary of state about?
Or would that be? I think that's I think we should go through Kevin first.
Okay.
Okay, so F, which is the pay request, I'll talk to Kevin. Um, do you wanna be? Well, let me see if I can get Kevin first. So I'll pose the issue to him. And it may be one of those where he has to call in to a meeting. Maybe not. I mean, it's a straightforward answer.
Give us an answer and we can do something in two weeks. That'd be great.
Okay, and so this goes on the agenda for two weeks hence to. All right, um comp time policy, which is something that you also do you wanna be in on this discussion too? Because it it affects how you keep track of and.
I I do. Okay, I've taken a lot of time. Maybe I can now. Call sit over there.
We won't blame you for how long this part takes.
Talk to you, you know, if you're over there, if you're up there.
H in your packet. Um, and I know we've um, yeah, sorry. H deals with an issue that it co- compensatory time would and I'm not gonna do this well, and I should just ask Matt if he will do it, cause but basically we don't have a comp time policy in the town of Rottlin. A comp time would allow an employee to um if the employee works overtime, they would be paid cash one and you know, for one and a half times their usual rate, or they could, if we adopt this policy, um that request comp time off at some other time.
And it in the comp time would be at the same hourly rate, same hours. In other words, if you work three hours, which would normally be overtime, you get three hours off or you get two hours off. How do they?
Yeah.
I've never been involved with that, cause I've never worked for anybody.
Right, I know.
If you're working time and a half.
Yes.
I've been quick. So.
Yep.
Um, the way that I talked to Teresa, the way we had kinda had it set up was if you work an hour of overtime, that's an hour you get paid time and a half. So your comp time would be an hour and a half. So if you work three hours, you'd get four and a half hours of comp time to use. At a later date, if you wanna take a day off or a half a day or whatever, um, you would get compensated a an hour and a half for every hour that you work.
Yep.
Yeah, and then there's a forty hour cap in this policy of where you could accumulate. Well, and another important point to that goes to what we're just discussing, this only applies to non exempt employees, so those who are eligible for overtime pay. Um, so I mean right now, I don't think Kerry would be eligible unless we could change it for her, change her the classification of her job for for this, but this is, you know, we'll cover certainly, you know, highway and police department. Um, so if they're working time and a half, they would they would have an option of either getting paid or accumulating comp time up to forty hours that they could use in that so the forty hours they can carry over, but that would be the the limit from one year to the next. So beyond that, they would that they would get paid. Um, and then uh we the town would have the discretion to buy down those hours if we if we buy down, they're getting paid at straight time because they get in the calculation of the hours, they get time and a half. So you get paid back at your hourly rate.
Straight time, yeah.
So we're proposing this. We did want it in effect before the end of the fiscal year. You haven't seen, well, it was in your packet. So we wanted to um address this and have it in place by July first. If you have questions about it and you wanna hold off, that's okay. If you're ready to vote on it, that's okay.
I mean, it does it it um.
Has the department head seen it?
This iteration, no. You wanna send it around to department heads?
I think we should probably get their feedback before we.
Normal procedures here, which.
Well, I mean, it makes some sense, but.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, based on what Dave said.
Department had seemed to like the idea of comp time. The actual language of this is not what they've seen.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's a good, we don't.
Probably pass this around to them just to make sure there's not.
Okay.
I I haven't seen it, but I've seen I've seen various versions of it. And it's been extremely clunky. Now, I don't know what the new version is, but the previous versions have been not great. So I would like to see the new version. Yeah, then I mean, we need we need the department heads to get that feedback back to us or Teresa ASAP in order to get this done so that she can finalize the time sheet, all of which we wanna have.
Right.
Going.
July first.
So I'm sorry.
Board in general, all of it.
Um, if we look at. Yeah, I guess you might as well. I mean, I hopefully we can.
I mean, there's two department heads I can think of that have experience with comp done, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so Bill, would you send around? Do you have this draft? Policy? Yes, cause it went in the packet. Would you please send it around to all department heads? And ask for feedback to come back within a week would be helpful. Okay, thank you.
And any pertinent suggestions? Cause you know, if there's something in there that they can add to it that would help s- speed up the process, you know, well, this is kind of baki or this is ununderstandable or whatever.
Uh, and Bill, if you could put this on the agenda for next meeting too, please. Okay, thank you. So that we keep.
Do if we do adopt this, feels like we do need to change this start date to the.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Okay, all right. Um, so we were doing that because it was kind of a Kerry question, but Kerry's gonna get a copy of the comp policy as one of the department heads. So if you within a month or within a week, if you could take a look at this in your spare time and you know, let us know if it's if it's workable and is clear enough, cause you're the one who's gonna have to deal with the the comp time issues. Yeah. Okay, well.
Yeah.
All right, so I think that's it for Kerry's time. Yes, all right. Uh, is Mike Delahanty on? Yes, thank you, Terry, by the way. Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Almost fell asleep there waiting rather all waiting for my time.
Yeah.
So did I.
Um, actually, um, I don't have anything new for you guys. Um, just actually got a new truck, which I'm just in the process of getting set up. Um, but uh, yeah, outside of that, um, I truly just don't have anything new for you for this round.
Okay.
Well, thanks for staying on for
Yes.
two and a half, three hours. Holy moly.
Yeah.
You enjoy it. There's been some entertainment here.
Oh, yeah.
No doubt.
All right, thank you.
Okay, take care.
Circus music.
Yeah.
Ed Dumas, town police chief.
No meeting, no report, no.
Next try.
Can't say that. So I did go to C fact to discuss the budget for the other thing and uh they're in the middle of hiring a new director. So they said, can we wait till we get a director on? I did mention the fact that it had to be a washer. We weren't doing they marry, cause we need to wait for the director to make that decision. So. That's what I'm trying to.
All right, so um, can we put it on for the next? Do you think you'll have something in or is that?
I will. I will email you all if I get some answers.
Fair enough.
We just ban leave it pending till. I'll let I'll let Bill know. He can let you know or whatever, put on.
Okay.
Bill's a go to throwing Adam kinda guy.
All right.
Uh, I don't have anything else really at this point.
Well, there were two quick things I wanted to mention. One is a commendation of um from a state trooper who was ably assisted by Officer Placas and Rooster and finding his badge.
Yes, he was.
Yeah. Right, um, so.
Yeah, he over in Proctor got into a dispute with a gentleman that needed to uh need help, let's put it that way. In the process, uh, trooper lost his badge. Called Rooster. He didn't think he would be able to do it. Wasn't acting right and he went over there and found it. Not where they thought it was either. It was off other side of the railroad tracks. So it'd be good. Very good. Rooster's been quite uh when he's working, he's called all the time, especially when it comes to the finding drugs and vehicles. I don't and he doesn't make a lot of times the issue with the dog. They make a they they think they want to get the treats, so they they'll alert on something and there's nothing there. They're just trying to get the treat, but a rooster. Uh, it's a credit to Jimmy, his dog and the training, and he's just that kinda person. Guys that are canine handlers usually in my opinion, or the last forty years I've watched them are usually good husbands, good fathers, and they know how to handle a dog. We just they just do it. And that's what described Jimmy to a T for sure.
Okay, well, thank you. And thanks to Officer Procas and to Rooster. Now, there was also an email that you sent um commending the work JP put on something that has also now come to a conclusion and sent it to um all of us, and that's the resolution of uh State versus Delaki.
Yeah.
Which was the complaint that the town of Rottlin threw JP pulling it all together. Um, complaint made and presented to the state's attorney's office um for the dangerous conditions at the then Holiday Inn that resulted in the well, among other things, the explosion that nearly um killed some of our firefighters there. And what happened was ultimately the then state's attorney did not prosecute the case, did not take it. So what came through just recently was an expungement of the record as if nothing was ever brought against this um particular then owner or operator of the um Holiday Inn at the time. And I I think the chief wanted us to know that there was that result, but also that there is enormous amount of work that JP had put in. Um, pulling this case together. And I do remember um some of the conversations around it.
Not only that, but I forgot to mention Bill. I mean, he put together how many books that book that he had to do? Ten, twelve? We're talking notebooks of all the information needed. And uh I know Bill put that together. We gave one to the state attorney. I got one. Everybody got a copy and uh there was an issue with the uh health code laws that no prosecutor in the state of Vermont had ever prosecuted him. So there was this hesitant hesitancy to go forward with those charges. And as a result, I don't think uh the firemen got what they deserved. That's for sure. But it wasn't me wasn't on lack of trying either.
No, and and we all appreciate it very much. Um, things don't always go our way.
I know. No.
Um, but that doesn't lessen our gratitude for the work that Bill and JP put in and you as well. So thank you very much. Okay.
I have just one thing on we talked a lot about hiring another officer. Is that how's that come along your the personnel policy thing?
That was the piece of the personnel policy that needed to be rewritten to take out.
Okay.
Conflict, no, to to take out the nepotism policy and add the conflict of interest language.
Okay.
So um we haven't drafted.
Okay.
Yeah, so sorry about that.
It's close.
And we're getting there. Yeah.
Should we move forward with hiring the police officer anyway?
I
We already have.
Just we take care of that piece in our personnel.
Already have nepotism in this.
All over the place. And I think that's why, and you know, it's not just this particular hiring. It's it's a policy that we need to clean up townwide.
Yeah.
So there's not a lot of question.
Think we should move forward with hiring our police officers so we can get the extra boots on the ground and get things rolling.
Is that a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to hire the new police officer. Um, Matt?
Well.
And but I'm I'm asking that because this, you know, the personnel committee has been working and discussing it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to get the policy done. We've been spending a lot of time on it. We still have ways to go. Um, I mean, it would've been ideal to have it done by the end of the fiscal year, but we've had a lot on that committee's plate. So I don't know that we're gonna make it necessarily. Um, the other missing piece to this, my view was the uh getting a handle on how much the Cortina funds we have available. Um, I think we have some better idea about that now. Uh, I think you some further clarification from Andrew. We also don't know yet how the what's going to happen with the school budget and if the school budget keeps failing, uh, there's a limited number of things that they can cut and one of those is the SRO. So that could be an issue that we may have to be looking to pick up the tab on as well. We really don't know yet. So I'm not comfortable moving forward at this point. I think we need some of these things to shake out before we can really make a decision.
I think, well, as much as I wanna go ahead with this, my concern would be similar to us paying Kerry over, you know, we do we open ourselves up to some kind of a challenge because we have a policy in place that we're knowingly violating. And it's, I understand Kurt's point with a fire and different other similar situations, but not quite the same.
Part of what you're touching on too is I think a specific possibility for hire that I don't think we should talk about in public.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanna know if you're it was going, I wanna force.
It we're back to it. Isn't a no.
Okay.
It's just.
Just wait.
Well, I mean, I think Matt articulated it. It's the policy and it's on budget uncertainty in a couple of different areas.
That's.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Do we wanna go ahead with the vote? All in favor of the vote to go ahead with the new police hire? Please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No, the noes have it. We're not hiring it this time.
I have a concern that we need to look at is if the school budget um fails and they cut the funding for the SRO. I don't think we can fund that position. Um, we need we need to find out about this because we would be if she's still gonna be the SRO, but the town is paying for it. We're subsidizing the school's budget and I don't think we can do that.
No, I I think we'd sign her up for C fact and there's our C fact officer and we're gonna have to take a little bit hit on.
She wouldn't be able to do it because she's not level three of being with uh right, telling cases. She she could operate. She would be a you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I I I think there's there's some stipulation that we can't do. In other words, the town can't pay her salary and allow her to be the SRO. We're paying half now and the school pays half, but we would be subsidizing the school about thirty thousand. Is it thirty five? That they put in, what how much do we?
Well, they put in. That's a whole other topic for finance, which is that they paying us more than we have budgeted for receipts.
Right.
Unclear how that.
Every.
But that's another.
So anyway, I think that we have to be careful there about that. Excuse me.
Okay.
All right.
So, all right, and and I'll try in my conversation with Kevin to raise that too. You might know off the top of his head.
JP might be a good resource because he was the legal counsel for school board or is this whatever he was.
Speaking of, is JP on tonight?
He is not. He is not.
Yeah, all right. Any. Anything further for Chief Dumas? Okay, thanks for your participation.
The other of sixteen officers you wanted.
Yeah.
Our hands are kinda tight.
I have, I'm working a case, so I gotta go.
Okay.
Bye, won't be. Thank you.
Thanks for staying.
Hey, um, Barbara Noe's pulling Town Planning Commission Chair.
Hi, good evening.
She's awake.
I think it's still the evening, right? We're not into morning yet.
Morning.
Um, just, just one item, um, action number or action D. Um, that pertains to the Town Planning Commission, um, applying for a municipal planning grant, it should be MPG um, from the state, um, to get more uh, information um, and inventory of our housing and what might be most desirable among residents. Uh, the MPG's, um, they're out, they come out every year. Uh, for something like this, there would be a thirty thousand dollar maximum um, from the state, uh, then ten percent from the town. So that would give us a thirty-three thousand to work with. Uh, and uh, that application period will open up uh, September, October uh, this year. So, so the Planning Commission um, is, is wondering if we, if they could spend time putting that application together. Uh, maybe working with the Regional Planning Commission on that. And also of note, the city is doing a couple of similar sto- uh, studies, analyses right now. They're doing a housing needs assessment. Um, and it should be done about that time that we're putting the application together. So maybe we can be using some of their information. And they're doing another analysis um, about um, development where transit is available, which may have some information as well. So, so that is the ask, um, which is, you know, can the Planning Commission um, put together an application for the town?
And this is on housing, basically.
Yes.
So it ties in with our discussion here a little bit earlier today. It also ties in with the housing survey that Rutland Town was asked to participate. And we had, what, seventy-seven responses? And the select board, before we moved on anything, wanted some more input. So this ties in with that request for input. So do we give the Planning Commission the okay to apply for a municipal planning grant?
So move.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, um, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Sharon? I said aye.
I, thank you. Okay, thanks Barbara. You've got our blessing and thanks for moving forward with that.
Okay, we'll keep you in touch about it. And yeah, that's all I, I have unless there's some questions.
Any questions?
I'm good.
All right. Um, thank you very much. I did visit with the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. It was a good time. They had a lot of questions about a lot of different things. So um, I, it was a good session. Okay, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Good evening.
Hi.
Um, I only have a couple of things, since our next meeting is in June. Well, where did that go? Um, our pool signups will be on June fifth and sixth, which I believe is Wednesday and Thursday from five to seven at the pool. And that is for our first round of um, lessons, which are starting on the seventeenth. We will open officially on the fourteenth at twelve o'clock, cause school gets out at twelve o'clock on the fourteenth. And that's what we have traditionally done for the twenty-some years I've been there. Uh, we have a number of parties lined up, um, which is good. So we'll, we'll hope to open the first, like, I'm gonna turn it on. So the electric bill will go through the roof on Friday. Uh, is the hope to have it turned on by Friday, Bill. Um, and then it will run. And then if it's nice that fall next weekend, not this weekend, but next weekend, then we will open up and go from there. If it's nice and they don't mind swimming in, you know, forty degree water.
Which can wake you up.
Caution on the.
And puts you down.
Caution on the news when the temp, air temperature gets to eighty and said, yeah, the lakes are still like thirty-six.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they put thermos sets in in about three seconds.
So we've done a lot, we've done a, some sprucing up down uh, at the pool, painting the building. Um, we painted some of the work that we've done that was pressure treated, and now it will look, it looks really nice. So the kids, some of the kids that have come back um, have done a, a, a good job getting us ready to go. Other than that, um, everything's running smoothly. Baseball's going great. As far as my line items and my budget, um, I normally, usually it's over twenty thousand that somehow finds its way back into the Capital Improvement Fund. I'm hoping this year that I go, I'm not hoping, it'll probably be more like five. So I will not go over my whole budget. Um, but I will come pretty close, and that's gonna be the first time in a long time, a first time ever for me, actually. So the cost of things have gone up and I level funded for a long, 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 long time. And, and it's hard to predict, right? But the bottom line, as Kerry tells me, is that you didn't go over your total budget. So there are items that I've already gone in my mind blown past, and a hundred dollars over is blown past for me. You need to understand that. And that really drives me nuts.
So if you're gonna be, you know, five thousand under at the end, and we haven't figured out this capital improvements thing.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll cross separate when we get there. Yeah. I'm not worried about it.
I don't, I'm not as familiar with your budget. Is there a new equipment line in your budget?
There is, but it's not a tremendous amount.
How much is it?
Uh, five hundred bucks? No, new equipment, say the two thousand.
There's a method to what I'm asking.
I understand the method, but it's already been spent. But yes.
Right, but.
Yeah, I could definitely spend. I understand what you're saying.
Over, if that line on them is overspent.
Like I said.
But your budget's not overspent, then.
Correct.
It's the same thing, only different.
I will have a better idea after these bills are put into the system and I look at my spreadsheet next time.
And I think I hear the wheels turning, yes.
Well, see, that's my wheels turning because I ran a budget for a long time. And I know that that is an acceptable
Mm-hmm.
procedure.
It is correct, but I also like to.
I, I understand that, but it kind of.
Kerry gets mad at me like it's, like I'm over like ninety-two cents and something.
Yeah, well.
It's stuff like that bothers me. I try not to.
Keep that in mind.
I will, and thank you. Other than that, I don't really think I have everything. Everything's going well.
Any questions for Mike?
Just a suggestion, that's all.
No, Joe, I don't know. Oh, I did take a course today, uh, that now certifies me for something at the pool. I, it was kind of mumbo jumbo, but it was actually a very good course about pool safety and maintenance.
I see.
Okay.
Just a half day course, lot of management stuff, which was really good. So I have a whole thing on it. So it was good to go to today.
Okay, thank you, Mike Rowe.
All right, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Yeah. Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Good morning, everyone. What time is breakfast?
Yeah. Mitch at Mary's.
What time is she open?
Uh, so I haven't spoken to you guys in, uh, it's weird, like if you miss a meeting, you haven't spoken to you guys in like a month. So, um, I don't know that I can eclipse Kerry, but I can be really close. So, uh, settle in for about an hour.
Righty then.
We're gonna shut the recording off in fifteen minutes.
All right, so just, um, I'll be quick. Um, since the last time we met, I believe, we put the Panhandler signs up down in Greenmount Plaza. And, um, I'm happy to report that they're still there. I, I didn't think they'd have that long of a shelf life.
When did they go up, Dave?
And, and, and only because it's twenty after nine, will I say that we put one down on Route Four. Uh, about fifty feet ahead of where they sit at Route Four and Seven, and that one is still there, believe it or not.
Okay.
Dave, when did the plaza one go up?
Uh, I don't know the exact date, but it was like three weeks ago, four weeks ago.
Oh, cause I drove by, I was out there the other day, and I totally did not notice it and made that because of that.
They're to the.
Yeah, they're not on the island where they stand. So there's, there's one as you, as you turn into the plaza into the first parking, or the, into the first driveway by ninety-nine. When you come to that end of that, if you look straight ahead, if you're on White Post, there's one right there.
Okay.
And, and then if you turn left and go down like you're gonna exit, when you get to that second stop sign, if you look straight across, there's one there. And then there's one in the little island by Cop John Drive, opposite of where the, the Panhandler stand. Those are the three.
South of there.
And then there's one on Route Four. That, that one on Route Four is my pride and joy. That one, I can't believe Vtrans hasn't taken it down yet, but it's still there.
They might figure they put it up.
Yeah, they had to know where it came from, but I think that, you know, if somebody in Montpelier saw it, they'd probably freak out, but the, like, the locals are probably like, yeah, somebody finally did something.
Okay.
So we've been kinda chipping away at plow damage. I think we have it done, except for the one phone call I'm gonna get in July. This says I have plow damage, cause that happens every year. So hopefully we have plow damage out of the way. Um, I had a Zoom meeting with uh, Andres and Anna from uh, wherever they're from, for the MS four stuff. And I talked to him about the, you know, I told him that we wanted to pave that neighborhood with the David, Ruth, uh, Nancy kinda whole thing. Um, believe it or not, they're not any further ahead with their plans for their stormwater stuff than they were last year when I talked to him about this. So uh, I'm not sure where we end up with that. Uh, they did kinda say that they didn't think they'd be up in, in the upper part of the neighborhood to be more down toward the uh, the backside of the property or the development. So I, I gotta see how it kinda all plays out, but I'm, I'm looking at kinda trying to pave that neighborhood next year. Um, they did uh, point out a couple uh, places on, there's one place on Coal River Road and another place on Campbell Road that were flagged by um, some of their operatives. Uh, I went out and checked them out. The one on Coal River Road, we went out and cleaned that. It was a, there was a drop inlet there that nobody knew was there. Uh, we cleaned that. That thing seems to be in good condition. It just need to be cleaned a little bit on the top. And the Campbell Road thing was um, an issue that's on our um, grants and aid for the summer anyway. So we'll, we'll be addressing that. Uh, because it's eighty degrees out, paving is a thing. So uh, last week, well, actually the week before last, I took the week off. And uh, uh, Fuller got started on paving. So uh, Connor Drive, Karen Drive, Linda Drive, and the, the dead end of Blue Ridge have been paved. Uh, we went out this week, or last week, I'm sorry. And uh, tops oiled and edged all of that. So that's all done. Uh, Bill came up one day last week, and we installed all of the dash cams on all of our rolling stock. So all of our trucks have dash cams now. So can't get away with anything. Like if you hold your arm, like I, I was coming to work the other day and I held my arm on the windowsill of the truck, and it came up and it said, no cell phones. The thing thought I was talking on a cell phone. Like, if you drink your coffee, a thing comes up and it's got a hamburger and a soda cup with a line, red line through it that says, no eating or drinking.
Really?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Big Brother's.
That's why I do all my eating and drinking as well.
Right, the thing just beats like nonstop. It's crazy. Um, so just kinda upcoming, uh, hopefully, I'm, I'm renting an excavator starting next week. Uh, so hopefully next week, we, I got a couple of small projects I gotta do first, and then we gotta put in uh, about three hundred and twenty feet of culvert on a net terrace. So that'll be our first major project of the year. And then when we get done that, we're gonna go tighten up that uh, post road sidewalk thing, get that out of the way. And last but not least, uh, just in case anybody sees, hears, or reads this, uh, we've, one of the guys found a Dodge Ram key fob up in the park. And anytime a Dodge Ram comes in, we chase them down like maniacs and ask them if they're key fobbing. So far, nobody. So if anybody out there knows of anybody that lost a key fob up around the park, uh, come see us and we can verify it because we can lock and unlock the doors for them without their knowledge. So that's kinda where I am.
Um, good. Joey's got a question.
I'm sure.
So the infamous roadside mowing.
Yeah.
Have you, have you, have you picked a victim?
Uh, I think, I believe it's gonna be Jason.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm looking at, um, if I can get this, um, three hundred and twenty feet of culvert put in here in the next week or so, probably around the first of June-ish, you know, maybe the second week of June. Go out and do like a quick one pass on everything and just knock some of this stuff down. And then once we get to, you know, probably the middle of July, July or something, it'll be a, a more wide ranging all out attack, but it's on our list.
Okay, well, you know, the, it's just, I, I always harp on you about the poison pine snip and the.
I know you do.
Try to keep, try to keep it from going to seed is all I ask.
Yeah.
And, and your son-in-law's worked it out for me many times in the last two weeks.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
But it's, it's seems to be proliferating for some reason.
Yeah, it's always, well, I, so, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, a budget, your expenses, income, are they on track? Okay?
I, I'm a little bit over right now, about a hundred and two percent of budget right now. Um, my expenses up above, or my uh, income up above is a little elevated, but there's, there's like two hundred thousand dollars we got back from the uh, Town Line Road paving project. And uh, gonna spend a pretty fair percentage of that. Um, starting probably tomorrow, uh, we're looking at doing uh, timber, metal, forest, and post road from Route Four to Squires, Squero's intersection.
Okay.
We're gonna do a, a, a pretty good chunk of paving with that. Uh, but I'm, I'm a little bit over budget, but I got shish, I don't know, just shy of three hundred thousand dollars to the left and carryover. We're trying to spend down a little bit, so.
Yes.
Not super concerned.
We'll make our auditor happy. Yes, thank you. Anything else for our Town Road Commissioner? Do we have somewhere a list of the roads and streets that are being paved this summer that we can?
Um, I can have the guys put it on our Facebook page, and uh, Bill can put it on the, the Town Facebook page.
Yes, please.
Yeah, that's a good plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do, so, those, there'll be those three or four streets. And then um, I did put in a class two paving grant for post road from the light at Route Seven up to the seam. Just, I don't know, about a third of the way up the hill to the school. So if we get that grant, that'll be later out in the summer, but.
The paving, Dave, that you're doing on um, post road, you said from Route Four in, is that under this year's?
That, that is under this fiscal year, yes.
Okay, cause you did have some that you were, some of it paving is the new budget that starts in July, and some of it's the old budget that started last July. Am I correct?
Right, so the, the stuff that I'm looking at, the, the forest metal and timber and post road that are probably gonna be done this week are the reimbursement from uh, AOT or Vtrans for the uh, Town Line Road. The stuff that happened last week, the Connor, Karen, uh, Blue Ridge and Linda are for FY twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. All right.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Dave. Appreciate it.
Four o'clock in the morning comes early, night, night.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Bill Sweet.
Sounds so excited. Don't be that bad.
Been up since five.
Okay, so we've done pretty well getting through the, the list and the packet. There's just a few things left uh, on, on each of those things. Um, did you wanna go over my list first? Do you wanna?
Whatever you would like to do.
So I'll go over my list first. Um, we had our ground penetrating radar scan of the cemetery last week. And lo and behold, we found in a third of the cemetery, we found seventeen unmarked graves.
Wow.
Way more than I thought. Uh, so. Way more than I thought. Uh, so if you combine the daytime, uh, there are. Flags and lines drawn out there right now where where we have those. Um, I went out today with a. Overhead picture of it and did some quick measuring and things to kind of mark them where they are so we can keep them keep them identifying. Uh, but there are none that are extremely way far over the bank. So. Uh, we could move forward with putting up the fence or you know, that project, but we so uh, I did and actually. Um, in our little map cubicles downstairs, I found the map for the cemetery. So uh, there are a bunch of numbers which don't exist. There's a bunch of numbers of of graves which don't line up with the list, so I gotta see if there's a supplement there, but uh, but it's very interesting and. I'm gonna see if we can find some some, but um. I'm going to try and find something that we can put up to at least identify where the where they are. Uh, so cuz eventually the flags are gonna disappear and the paint's gonna wear off and we're not gonna know where they are again, so. Uh, but very interesting and um, it was a really neat process to watch them watch them work. Uh, the electrical upgrade work for the building has actually started. Uh, the new panel is mounted. Uh, that's about as far as they got so far. Uh. They were talking about a couple of days where they're going to need to shut power off to the building to put in the transfer switch and the meter socket. Uh, they said June sixth and seventh were really good days for them and um. Uh, the clerk's office is going to be closed those two days as it is anyway, so. Uh, as it stands, the whole building will be closed the sixth and seventh to have maintenance done on it. Um, so. Uh, we'll put that message out there to get it out, but uh, that will be a big a big step in the process, but they're they're moving forward uh, really well.
Maybe we should put, you know, the signboard you put out from.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll we're we're gonna use a lot of methods to to get that information cuz that's gonna be a a big, that's gonna be a big change, obviously, from our normal schedule. In your packet, you have the list of scholarship recipients. There are two from schools that are not Rutland High School. So I wasn't sure if you were gonna go to MSJ again this year, if you would, if they gotten told to you, I haven't heard back from them at all for for when it is, so. Okay, so we've got the class night for uh, Rutland High. Um, did we want to invite those other two kids to a board meeting? Do we wanna, I don't know how we want to. Communicate to them that they were, they're gonna get this award cuz they don't know yet.
I'm not gonna tell them tonight.
We are not.
No, but we do need to approve the list without, you know, disclosing. Motion's been made to approve the list. And seconded. All in favor, please say aye. And.
Thanks to our scholarship.
Yes, very much. Thank you.
They did expedited review and it was really very helpful.
Think I'm doing class night for Rutland High School. Folks are not available, is that correct?
They know, they know we are coming. That was the extent of.
I don't wanna take away anybody's if somebody else was planning on doing it. I don't wanna take it away.
Not available, unfortunately.
Okay, Sharon.
I'm gonna do MSJ.
Okay, all right, so um, I was asked to cover Rutland, so I will. If anybody wants to join me, they're welcome. It's kind of a fun time. And as to the other two, Sharon's doing MSJ, so that just leaves. Okay, what do you want to do with that?
Suggest we send an invite, but the timing would be. When?
Yeah, exactly.
And then invite after the graduation.
Uh, Rutland Awards Night is twelfth, so if we did like our s- our second meeting against June is the eighteenth or. What we do before that doesn't really matter. One of those meetings in June, I would say.
Would most every graduation be done by the eighteenth June, I guess?
Probably.
The fourth might be a little early.
Similarly, they're gonna graduate at this point. It's just a question.
Does that really matter?
I don't think.
Well, we they have to, it it it, a bill has to be presented to be eligible to get the scholarship award. It's not just paid out. So it's it's, there is actually a presentation of a of a bill, so.
We just provide them the letter saying we're wording this, but he'll explain that.
Yeah, that that's that's in there, yes.
So do you do the letters or we've?
Letters are done.
The letters.
So I I can I can get those to you in the next couple of days. I'll put names on them and whatnot. Um, and I'll get you the one for MSJ and and then we'll just have that one. So yeah, a lot of letter done that. That's that's relatively easy, so.
Okay. And so why don't we invite the other person to come in on the eighteenth?
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Stephanie called me today to uh, remind me that we have not responded to her statement of qualifications request email for the Route seven north. Uh, firm, um, so please check your emails.
Was good. I was gonna do that this afternoon.
Stephanie sent the email last week about uh, us selecting the consultant for the project. And evidently she wanted the answers yesterday. Dave Dave responded, Dave Dave, they've got the gold star for that that project. Uh, he passed, but we have, the three of us have not, so.
Aren't we doing like, I thought we had to do this.
So is it? You do, but he does it, you do it, I do it, and Dave does it, and then we come together and talk about it.
Okay, so it's all in the email form?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's where my.
All the information you need is in that email. So please review the three candidates as I will and come up with your. List of scores and then get them to Stephanie as soon as we can. She'd appreciate that. You you mentioned the list for Kevin. I I followed up with him to ask if he needed anything else. I never heard backs. We still, we still have like five things. Outstanding on on our part of it too, so. Um, we're gonna add a couple more to that list.
Yes, we are.
Townwide celebration flyers that we traditionally print and hand to get to the school. Um, we we need to get them done because June thirteenth is the last day of school. So I've got about two weeks, three weeks to. Finish the design, get them ordered, get them printed. The ordering and printing doesn't usually take them very long, but. Um, June thirtieth is the last day of school. We would like to get them there before then ideally, so. Um, if there's anything we want to change on it, or whatever modification we make, we should, we should get that done as soon as we can. So if anybody has any questions, comments, I'm I'm pretty much the same format as the couple, last couple of years. We just changed the pertinent information and maybe the, some of the. Things that are being included, but uh, but we gotta, we gotta get those ordered. Got the results from the Town Hall Energy Audit today. Uh, it's like eighty something pages, so I did not go through it, but it is very detailed, very extensive, uh, lots of recommendations and things, so it's it's very, it was. Very extensive, so uh, we will probably send it to the building committee to to digest, but it's uh, it's a lot of information in there. Uh, as Dave said, we got the, we got the uh, cameras and the vehicle uh, information monitors put in. Uh, very interesting, gave a lot of, gives a lot of data already. Uh, yes, they do, they do tell them when they're doing that. So we need, I need to follow up with VLCT to ask them cuz they said part of the grant reward, they're gonna want to know some information and some feedback on what we found. So I gotta find out from them exactly what they're looking for and make sure we actually are collecting that information. Um, currently, the only video capture we get is if there's a, if there's a collision. If it detects a collision, we will, it'll capture video. Beyond that, we're not recording anything to to save it at the at the moment, so. That is, that's the rest of that list. So now we have just what's left uh, in the packet and on the agenda.
Okay. So Personnel and Finance Committee met. I think we've covered most of the things. Um, in our various, most of it was meeting with Carrie and then um, requesting some of the. Close to year end reports from the department heads.
You talked about the transfer station and the transfer stations generator. Which has never been on a maintenance schedule of any kind anywhere.
Oh, great.
So it was given to us from. Belco many years ago. It was rewired to work for the transfer station, but it is not, it's not a standby generator, so it's never been put on a maintenance list. So it's not been budgeted for maintenance, it's just kind of there.
It's, it was at the highway garage. Byron took it from the fire station because we decided to. Now at the highway garage. That one went to town uh, highway. They got electrician and got it set up so they could run either the highway garage or the. Because transfer station is the only building in town, except for the new public safety building, that's three face. But it's always been maintained by highway.
So what's your pleasure? Do we?
I I would just leave it the way it is. I wouldn't, because that one is highway maintenance. They, you know, they'll take, you know, if it needs oil change or whatever, because that one does not come on automatically. If they lose power at the highway garage. Or at the transfer station, they are going to have to get that, set it up, plug it in, start it. So it would probably, you know, Dave's guys can make sure it runs once or twice a year, make sure it's all happy and. And because the hot transfer station is only open two days a week. Yes, there's probably a chance that eventually there's gonna be open and there's gonna be no power, but it's not on the same. Level as fire or this building or the others where.
And the only thing they really lose the ability to do is run the trash compactor. The doors are manual, I mean, everything, everything else is.
Lights don't work without power, but.
No, but.
It is mostly daylight.
So but that that, but that was brought up, so I want, I wanted to 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 touch base on that, that it 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 is not part of a maintenance schedule. It was never really, never really been talked about before, so.
And Larry Larry's question was about buying it. He was talking about buying a trailer to put it on, so it could be moved around and. You know, Mary sent out the email, the department heads basically saying, let's not spend right now. I don't know if you checked his email. It does occur to me, Mary, that he's not been on this list of department heads and probably a couple times a year, we ought to invite him.
It should be just located where it needs to be up there and doesn't need to, cuz that's the only building it's gonna be used on.
Right.
As far as I know.
Yeah, I don't know if it's.
The problem is where it's stored right now, as I understand it, and maybe, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm sure he's talked to you, but. And it's hard, you can't plug it in. He has to move it, I guess, in order to plug it in.
Yeah, it's move it outside.
He was talking about building a shed for it, now he's talking about maybe a trailer would make more sense, because. You move it over there and then if you had to take it for maintenance, but if maintenance isn't an issue, then that's one less thing, so.
I don't know if he can run it inside. I hope he can run it. I mean, even. It it is pretty well, pretty well ventilated in there, but yeah, that that, so so uh, it's probably worth further discussion, but.
So.
Yeah.
It might, you know, for three thousand dollars, you could almost. Pour a little slab and put a little building up, put it where it needs to be.
We're gonna do that with a porta potty too.
Well, baby steps, baby steps. Now, the porta potty idea, I don't like when the slab and, but I do like to.
I think as long as we pour the slab.
Any money the rest of this year.
We don't have to do anything. Cuz.
I mean, unless it's within his budget, you know, either.
Yeah.
We can invite him in the next, invite him in the next, for the next meeting, put him on the list, okay?
Yeah, why don't we do that? And, yeah.
I'll put him at topless and like kick Dave down a little bit.
All right, next?
Uh, next, you have uh, the change orders for the public safety building. Which are in the packet.
In your packet, B, John Paul sent around the. Change order and then the the potential change orders and the ones that have been. Approved and rejected and so on, but the pending change order is the one that's on the second page. It's number ten. And it relates to the ledge removal and we were getting in updates on that. And yes, there was extra ledge there. So um, the amount is thirty three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. What's your pleasure?
Pay for it.
Kind of.
And that doesn't put us over.
Be pretty close, aren't we?
One ninety eight out of two fifty. I mean, that's. The bulk of that was as um. Unsuitable soil that really bit us hard.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the change order.
And have me sign this one.
Chair sign on behalf of the town.
Is there a second? Discussion. If not.
Kind of one of those is with these type of things.
We're gonna tell them to put it back.
Yeah, I mean, they're ninety yards over on what their contract allowed, so.
Okay, um, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the last thing you have is the. Uh, amendment to the list of public and non-public roads. For adding Partridge Place. So there are a couple typos in this, but this is just a example, basically, of what it what it's gonna look like, but. Uh, if we vote to add Partridge Place like we talked about last time. Um, at the top of Crestway, at the end of the, at the end of the town. Um, then it would start the, start the process and we'll send the warnings and do all the things that add a road name.
So do we need to make a motion to?
Yes, you would.
Dude, what do we do? We're vending this, right?
You would need to vote to amend the uh, road name and road location ordinance to add Partridge Place as a. To the list of public and non-public roads.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion. We talked about it quite a bit last. All in favor, please say aye.
That's everything on my list.
Um, grand list extension request. I signed the wrong one. They look alike, so I'm just gonna leave it.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, AM Pash. The um, item two, assuming you folks. Okay, um, this, every year we enter into an audit letter or audit agreement with them. They are the folks who do our audit. Andrew Simons is the principal who usually works with us. Um, and it looks like the cost estimate this year is eighteen thousand. Last year it was seventeen. I mean, it's been in this vicinity before.
Out of the next budget, right?
Yes.
Remind me and. I feel like he told me this uh, a few weeks ago, but does this include the? X, the special audit we have to do?
The single audit? I know they were talking about that, but I don't, I don't know.
We don't have, no, I don't think it does.
That much to do the regular audit.
I think what he told me was we were gonna qualify for that streamlined version that we talked about, which was good news, but.
He he came in the other day and asked about that, so yeah.
Somably, that's a separate engagement.
It would be, yes. I I, that really, really, this was left for me to send to you guys, so I don't, I don't know what. Really is involved, so.
Well, could we remind him that we probably need a separate letter on the single audit?
We can live, I'm I'm sure he, he knows, but so so he came in and we, cuz we're looking at the list of grants that we have and and it, what we plan to spend for federal money. And we're not going to spend anything that's gonna put us over that list, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're we're in good shape.
So we're, we don't need it yet, but it will.
Yeah, there's only a few things in the grant money that are, that are substantial funds. One of them is Route seven or sidewalk and we're not gonna be spending. We're not ready for that yet.
Okay.
So.
So what was the story with the ARPA thing?
There's a, there's an exemption for the ARPA things and and because of that, we're, we're gonna, that he said we're, we should be able to be. Good with the, the pared down version of the, of that audit.
Okay.
Yeah.
But so that's still a second audit that we need to do.
Yes, separate, separate, separate from this. This is, this is, this is our normal every year regular audit.
So move will approve and allow the chair to sign.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve um, hiring AM Pash for our regular audit with the chair to sign discussion. Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any opposed? Never can tell whether we're the management signature or the governance signature. I have no idea. I'm just gonna sign the top one. I'm just gonna sign the top one.
Well, Carrie, I know Carrie has signed the other one.
If it's wrong, he'll tell us, we'll send.
You might be signing, government might be the flagboard and management might be carrying, that's just my thought.
Oh, that's just one of many things.
Okay, that's just me.
Alright, um, we have, let's see, I think that's everything. Um, would you please draft a letter from the select board to Jack McCamley, thanking him for his work on behalf of the town.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks, I'm assuming you folks are good with that.
Um, now that you mention it, uh, I didn't notice in the letter that he said that the timing of his resignation was, I'd be assuming that's immediate or the end of the fiscal year.
It, it was immediate.
Yeah.
Yes.
See you later, bye.
Marcia is uh.
I must turn to my resignation.
I noticed that as, as well, but talking to Marcia, it's, it's effective, um, she's gonna get the key from him, he does have the key for his, for their office door, but we've removed the door code, so.
Um, municipal officials reappraisal checklist.
For Marcia, she just left, she wanted to give that to you in case you had any questions on the, on that.
Detailed appraisal compliance plan, that's also for Marcia, okay? And.
That was just for you, that was, she just wanted to, like, if, if anybody wanted to read it, it was.
Okay.
You got nothing to do.
Yeah.
So inclined to.
And is that everything?
I think that's everything.
List, let's see, special election. I didn't check with um, departments on the townwide celebration attendance, um, but, well, I didn't.
When, when you email them the um.
Comp time policy.
Comp time policy, just ask them if they're gonna be part of the town, like, just send it the same email.
Come time, come to.
You want comp time, you gotta show up.
There you go, there you go. Um, to that, to that, okay, do we have any reason to meet an executive session?
A transaction to report on?
No. Because the transaction in question um, the needs review by the other side's attorney. Which is a good thing, I mean, I would feel more better.
Than the key mails.
Alright, move to adjourn.
Motion's made to adjourn, seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.